Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and blessings for all. I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight in person on Boston City TV and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you all for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the June 5th meeting link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation virtually in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Variano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. We'll begin the meeting with the approval of minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 22nd, 2024 School Committee meeting. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Before I turn it over to the superintendent for her report, I want to remind members that our next School Committee meeting is Monday, June 17th. We don't normally meet on Monday, but the Juneteenth holiday falls on that Wednesday. We will be voting on the proposals from the May 22nd presentation regarding the capital planning projects. If you still have outstanding questions, I ask that you submit those to Ms. Parvex by Friday, June 7th to give the district time to gather the necessary information and respond to you. I also encourage members to take advantage of the meeting with staff outside of our formal committee meetings. This is another way to get clarification or a deeper understanding of the work. We'll now move on to our superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And it's not that I don't like the rest of the committee. I'm just feeling a little under the weather and want to be respectful of the distance over here. So before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge that the amazing and legendary former BPS superintendent, Dr. Carol Johnson, is among us here tonight. Although she's joining us to testify during public comment, I'm excited to share that BPS, in partnership with Boston University, recently created a fellowship in her name. We hope that Dr. Johnson's years of service at BPS and her work after leaving the district will inspire and uplift the next generation of our school leaders. I'd like to start my superintendent's report with an update on negotiations currently underway with the Boston Teachers Union. You may remember, BPS and BTU reached a historic agreement two years ago that expires at the end of August. We worked together with our union partners to make changes to the collective bargaining agreement so that all of the district's schools are inclusive and can provide a continuum of services that support all of our students, no matter how they learn, what language they speak, or what neighborhood they call home. Traditional practice has been that the district does not start negotiations until the most recent contract expires. This year, our goal is to finalize the new contract before the current one expires on August 31st. We began meeting weekly with the BTU in February in an effort to meet that goal. Many people think negotiations are about taking sides and they can be hostile, but we're actually finding a lot of common ground that we're working from and remain respectful to each other. And this has been critical to the positive outcomes that we've seen so far. The proposals we've discussed at the table center students and families at the core of every decision. This is something that is a priority for us, and I know that it is for the BTU as well. Each school and each student is unique. We agree that there isn't a one-size-fits-all approach. In any language changes, we are each seeking is to best serve our students. Consistent with the mayor's priorities across all contracts, most important to us is to significantly increase the wages of our lowest-paid employees. Traditionally, every member of the bargaining unit receives the same flat percentage increase. For this contract, instead of just providing the same flat rate of increase for all, we've taken an equitable approach, prioritizing larger increases in wages for our lowest-wage workers, namely our paraprofessionals and our ABA specialists. Just to give a sense of numbers, the average salary of a para is roughly $44,000. The average salary for an ABA specialist is roughly $57,000. The average salary for a teacher is roughly $111,000. There are different requirements for each position. Teachers will always be compensated at higher rates, but we all agree that our pares and ABA specialists play critical roles supporting some of our highest-need students, especially as we transition to a fully-inclusive district. Their compensation should reflect that value. There are several different salary groups and steps for both pares and ABA specialists. So depending on where someone currently falls, we'll determine the percent increase they receive. But for pares, the increase we are proposing may be as high as nearly 20%. And for ABA specialists, the increase may be as high as 28%. I'm grateful to the mayor and to the city for providing the financial authority so that we can offer these significant increases. I know this is a place the BTU agrees is a priority for this contract, and we continue to engage with them on our financial proposals. We have also discussed several other topics where we are still going back and forth on contract language, but there is common ground to be had. Things like strengthening and adding professional development, especially safety care training and inclusive education, identifying additional resources for teachers as we transition more classrooms to be inclusive, identifying payroll efficiencies to better streamline payroll operations for more timely responses from the payroll department, fewer errors in payment, and clarity for workers to understand their wages. And a few others, like updates to our leave policies, a joint committee on climate change curriculum, restorative justice positions, parental involvement on our inclusive planning teams, and many more. We remain committed to finalizing a deal by the end of June, and we know that this is just a few weeks away. But as we've narrowed the proposals, it allows us to ramp up the meeting schedule to finalize language. Last thing I'll say on this just bit off-topic, but important to acknowledge is the leadership of outgoing BTU President Jessica Tang. Sometimes in the press, it gets played up that there's disagreements between us and the union, but the truth is that we work very collaboratively together. We don't always agree, but there's always an open dialogue, and we do our best to problem-solve together. Jessica's been an excellent leader for her members, and I know she will bring the same passion and energy as she takes on her new role, leading AFT of Massachusetts. We will miss her. I will miss her, but I know that she isn't going too far. Thank you, Jess, for your service to the students, families, and workforce. And to Eric Berg, thank you for your continued service. I know we will build on the good work that we started together. Summer jobs update. I'd like to take a moment to share some updates on the city's summer jobs efforts. As you may remember, Mayor Wu announced the mayor's youth job guarantee in her State of the City addresses in January, guaranteeing a summer job to every eligible BPS student who wants one. And this year, the city's summer jobs website was revamped and named Future Boss to make applying for positions easier and more accessible. More than 8,000 summer jobs are available this year. Upwards of 8,000 young people have applied. More than half of this year's applicants are BPS students. We'll update the committee when we have more data about the summer jobs program, but that's certainly a very impressive point up to now. BPS students who have applied can visit boston.gov/futureboss to access resources to help them better navigate the application, onboarding, and hiring process. Jobs are filling up, but there's certainly some opportunities still open. If a student has been offered a summer job, we urge them to complete the onboarding as soon as possible so that they can begin working this summer. The city is holding events on June 11th, 13th, and 20th to help applicants navigate and complete the onboarding process. For students who need a health certificate to get their working papers, the city is also holding clinics on June 8th, 15th, and 22nd. This year, the city and district tried a new approach and held 36 workshops in three different BPS schools: English, Boston Arts Academy, and the Edward M. Kennedy Academy for Health Careers. This allowed us to reach more than 300 ninth and 10th graders. The workshops focused on how to complete the application and the onboarding process. The city team continues to analyze the data from the workshops and will use that information to plan and hopefully expand next year. More information about summer jobs can be found at boston.gov/futureboss. Last week, I joined Mayor Wu, Chair Robinson, and several members of the school committee at one of my favorite BPS events, the annual valedictorians luncheon. This year's luncheon honored 32 BPS seniors who graduated at the top of their class. I'd like to take a moment and tell you a bit about this exceptional group of students. More than half of them will be the first to go to college in their families. Close to half of them have spent their entire career in BPS from kindergarten to graduation. 10 were born outside of the United States. And eight students hail from different countries, including Argentina, Colombia, Cape Verde, China, El Salvador, Haiti, and Vietnam. The valedictorians were joined by their families and school leaders at the luncheon and received a citation from the Boston School Committee and Superintendent, $100 Amazon e-gift card, and Red Sox tickets. The event also included a moving and inspirational speech from Madison Park Technical Vocational High School valedictorian Arlene Yanis about her journey from a high school student to earning an associate's degree through the school's early college pathway. Special thanks to the Boston Red Sox and President Sam Kennedy for hosting the event and to Eastern Bank Foundation, two of the sponsors for this year's event. I'd also like to thank event host Amaka Ubaka. Today in New England's morning anchor at WHDH, she brought such a great amount of energy, enthusiasm, and celebrated our students as they should be. Just a few other bright spots. There were other celebrations and end-of-the-year events at BPS that I wanted to share a little bit about. As we look toward the last day of school, we'll continue to celebrate our students' achievements and the culmination of some of the district's work in the coming weeks. On May 23rd, the Office of Community Engagement hosted a book fair here at the Bowling Building for BPS students, and it was a tremendous success. Six BPS schools attended over three days, and approximately 1,800 books were distributed to students across all grades. 10 authors participated by signing books and engaging with attendees. Students also participated in eight literary activities and workshops, such as bookmark-making and poetry-writing. More than 3,000 books were donated from major supporters, such as Candlewick Press, Order Square Books, Getty Publishing, Charles Bridge, Simon &amp; Schuster, and Northeastern. A very big thank you to all of the partners who came out to support our students. On Wednesday, May 22nd, I joined the wrap-up event for my 2023 engagement tour, the culmination of the series of meetings with community leaders across Boston that we launched back in the fall of 2023 with the Office of Family and Community Advancement. The goal of the tour was to engage leaders and organizations in an effort to build community relationships, deepen BPS' understanding of the issues impacting children and families, learn from the community how we can continue to improve partnerships, and hear about community members' BPS experiences. During the tour, I attended 10 meetings with leaders from the African-American, Latinx, Cabo Verdian, Vietnamese, Arabic-Muslim communities, Native American communities as well. The event celebrated the success of the tour, highlighted themes that emerged through the meetings with community leaders, and reviewed the lessons learned. I'm really looking forward to continuing to work with our communities to strengthen and build on the relationships that we've formed. Last week, BPS held its 12th Annual BPS Citywide Arts Festival. Nearly 1,000 students showcased their talents in the visual and performing arts over three days, both on Boston Common and here at the Bowling Building. I want to give a special shout-out to Tony Beatrice, Executive Director for the Arts in BPS, for the work he and his team do to support arts throughout the district all year, all 339 arts teachers. Congratulations to all of our BPS artists. Last Saturday, I attended the annual BPS Steam Fest event, which was at Madison Park. Hundreds of students engaged in activities with partners, attended workshops in the steam field, and participated in the BPS Innovation Challenge. This was a design challenge. Hands-on learning sparks students' interest in steam and really encourages them to be curious and collaborative, critical thinkers. Knowledge and understanding of steam learning is important for our young people because it's actually very vital to today's economy. Big shout-out to BPS Executive Director of STEM, Beth Maluski, on a great event. In this photo, Beth is flanked by New Mission High School alums Cliff Freeman and Shanaya McHale, who served as Innovation Challenge judges. So these were students who had previously participated as students and then came back as alum. Thank you for giving back to BPS. And finally, a few things on spring sports. I'd like to close with some news from the BPS Athletics and our 2024 Spring City League Champions. The O'Briant Boys Volleyball Team were named City League Champions last month after besting Boston Latin Academy at Madison Park. This is the third straight title for the Tigers. On Saturday, May 25th, BPS softball and baseball finalists competed for the City League Championships at Boston College. In softball, BLA prevailed over O'Briant, making their 20th straight City League championship. English High School baseball won over BLA, their second straight City League title over the Dragons. BLA senior captain Eli Idemond Gilbertson, on her 200th career run, her fourth BLA title, and winning Most Outstanding Player for the second time. An English high senior, David Castillo, was also named Outstanding Player for the second year in a row. This spring's City League's champions in outdoor track and field are BLA in the girls' division and O'Briant in the boys' division. The Mary Grant athletes of the meet were Diana Melgar from East Boston High School and Jonah Levine Fried from BLA. Mary Grant was a longtime BPS track and field commissioner who passed away a few years ago. And BLS senior Colin Fisher won the Division One State Championship in the Mile at the MIA Divisional Meet. Congratulations again to all of our athletes on an outstanding season of competition, camaraderie. As always, thanks to Joe Allen for these photos. And it is just a wonderful way to showcase our students' talents. This is also, as I close my report, Chair, graduation season. We've already begun the graduations around our city, and so just encourage our school committee members, as well as the public, to share in what is always for our young folks, just the highlight of their secondary careers. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, superintendents. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes, one or two questions. Please make sure your questions are on topics related to the items in the superintendent's report. And I'd also like to remind BPS staff to be brief in your responses, and please speak at a slower pace for our interpreters. Thank you. Are there any questions? Yeah, Ms. O'Neill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Superintendent, I'm sorry you're feeling under the weather, but thank you for being here tonight. And, you know, this is a special time of year from the valedictorians luncheon that you talked about to the graduations about to start that we'll all be partaking in, and congratulations to our graduating seniors. You mentioned so many events going on. I had to mention one more because it was the 10th anniversary of it, and that was at Binka. They had their 10th anniversary of the speech competition this past week. And the English teacher there, Carolyn Ballou, has carried on the tradition, and it's a wonderful time. And I know she brings in a lot of people from the community to judge, and I did a couple of the sessions. And to hear from the students at Binka, their life experiences and their thoughts on climate change and mental health and the perennial need for a soccer field, which they very much want. So I just wanted to thank the team at Binka for putting that on. It's the 10th year. I think I've done it nine of the 10 years, and it's another highlight of the season. So, congrats to them.
Yeah, last year, I remember I was so impressed with just the practical solutions they were trying to solve for. And last year was actually one around cell phones. And they kind of did some experiments about figuring out that they were less distracted by not having their cellphone during the day.
Absolutely. While they were talking about mental health this year, and a lot of it was less screen time. And it's great when you hear it directly from the students. So I just wanted to make sure to call out the team at Binka.
Thank you.
While we're talking about that, just one other event. I had the pleasure yesterday of attending a celebration for the end of a project, partnership actually, between my organization and BPS, Turk. And it was a project called Doing the Math, which is a professional development program for our coeducators or our paraeducators in really thinking about their math proficiencies, particularly those who are present in the pre-K grades all the way up to grade three. And it was a wonderful celebration of about 30 wonderful coeducators, and just seeing them graduate from this program was phenomenal. We had Counselor Mahia stop by, and also Leslie Ryan Miller from your office stopped by to give remarks. And so definitely wanted to call out just the deep appreciation that we have for paraeducators and thinking about their development as it pertains to our students because they are one of the essential bloodlines and connections that we have to the community. So, thank you for this event.
And I just wanted to share that I started out this morning celebrating with some of our youngest members of our district and attended the Teddy Bear's picnic at the Baldwin Early Learning Center with a wonderful array of very young three-fours and fives, and at the same time got a chance to see the stepping up, moving on ceremony for some of the children in K-2 and first grade that will be going on to other schools. So no matter whether they're the youngest or oldest in our district, there's a lot to celebrate this time of year. There are no more questions? Now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's...
Sorry. I just was going to ask, do we have... It's my typical question at this time of year. Do we have any update on city council and the budget process? And again, anything for us to be aware of in its approval process?
Sure. So, city council has not taken an initial vote yet. We would anticipate that happening relatively soon. We have held a total of, I believe, five hearings, and we've solicited whatever questions remained, which we've answered and sent back. So, you know, I'm continuing to reach out to the individual counselors to see if there's anything that I can further explain or, you know, something that they feel strongly about that may not be as clear as it needs. So we would anticipate a first vote relatively soon.
And any trends on the feedback or...?
I mean, I think that it was very helpful that Counselor Worrell and I were able to come together and actually do some plenary sessions because I think it gave the council an opportunity at the beginning of the budget process to lay out what some of those things were. And the things, you know, we heard were social, emotional, and mental health, support for students, inclusive education, sports, athletics was another big one, school safety was another. And so what we did was we rotated in different members of our leadership team, depending on what the topics were. So we actually covered quite the range of topic areas for them. So I think just based on the last set of questions, most things have been answered. So now I think they'll start their deliberation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you all. I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specifics policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of a later discussion by the committee. The meeting will feature two public comment periods, with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up for virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who hasn't testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 47 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large group addressing the same topics are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. We will begin this evening with our in-person speakers. The first speakers will be Dr. Carol Johnson Dean, Jessica Tang, Eric Berg, Jada Rackard, and Janina Rackard-Vickers. Dr. Carol Johnson Dean?
Good afternoon, Chairperson Robinson, members of the Boston School Committee and Superintendent Mary Skipper. I'm truly honored to be here, and I just want to acknowledge that former board member, Mrs. Alfreda Harris, helped me get transportation and parking to get here, so no small task. I just do want to say before I make my comments that I applaud the people who choose to serve in public service. There is no greater gift to the democracy than people who choose to serve. It takes time, energy, time away from your families, and we are honored that you choose to participate in democracy in this way. But today, I'm really here to submit a letter in support of renaming the Jeremiah Burke High School in honor of the distinguished educator, servant leader, and absolutely extraordinary leader, Al Holland. I recognize that changing the name of our school is just an amamentous thing, and most times we don't do it until somebody dies. But Al Holland has never, ever stopped serving. And this prestigious landmark is in the heart of Roxbury and has been both cherished and wonderful legacy. and wonderful legacy to our community. It will help to rejuvenate the pride that the alums have and give educators the capacity to really transform lives as they've done for decades. As a teacher, principal, deputy superintendent and the headmaster of both the Jeremiah Burke and the Edward Kennedy Health Careers Academy, he has not only impacted student achievement, he's rescued students who might have otherwise lost hope, given up. He's mentored many educators and school and districts leaders. It is no secret to anybody in this community that when there's been a fire, Al Holland has been called to put it out. He's established collaborative conversations when there have been lots of disagreements in the community and he's found ways to calm the waters. He is someone who's deeply respected, but he's someone who operates always with a humble spirit. You will rarely see Al Holland stand up and take credit for anything, even though he's been behind the scenes doing all this work. I am one voice, but I promise you, if Tom Pizzant were here, if Brenda Casillas were here, if Dr. Chang were here, they would echo my same words. If Mayor Manino was here, if Marty Walsh was here, they would echo my same words. So please, please, please take this important step to honor the Roxbury community and to honor Al Holland for representing it so well and making a difference in the lives of so many children. Thank you so much for having me here today.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jessica Tang.
Good evening. Is it on? Yeah. All right, good evening, Chair Robinson, Superintendent Skipper and members of the school committee. My name is Jessica Tang. I'm the outgoing president of the Boston Teachers Union and new president of the AFT Massachusetts.
I'm Eric Berg. I'm the vice president of the Boston Teachers Union and the incoming president of the Boston Teachers Union.
And we are here this evening to urge you all to seriously consider our proposals so that we can get an agreement done that would be transformative for our students, educators and schools. We are committed to school improvement and our proposals are the solutions that are needed. And that this is not just us as the president and vice president advocating for these proposals. We are backed by 8,500 members and countless students, parents and community allies. All the signatures behind us are just a fraction of our members who signed on to show that they support the contract proposals we're advocating for.
We have a number of priority issues. For example, adequate staffing to maintain a safe and nurturing climate in our schools, including a building sub at each site, an end to students receiving counseling services in public hallways, fully staffed libraries and basic employer functions such as a clear written explanation of hours and rate of pay, better access to leaves for family illness, pay equity at autonomous and Schedule A schools and more.
One major priority is to end the district's policy of depriving students of disabilities and multilingual learners from the supports of an additional teacher that they can get in every other district across the state and replace it with a model that ensures all of our students get the services and supports they need. This is proposal number one.
A second top priority is a wage increase for all of our members that keeps up with the cost of living. Special attention to our lowest paid members who currently have a starting salary of less than $30,000. We recognize that the district has made an offer that moves in this direction, but it is insufficient when you consider the high cost of living in Boston.
So here's what we are seeking from the school committee. We ask that you be involved in negotiations, pay close attention to the proposals the district has made and push your team to attend to the priorities expressed by our members. And thank you, Jerry, Chair Robinson, for attending. Our contract is expiring at the end of August. And to set up our students and educators for success this fall, we need an agreement reflecting our priorities now.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jada Rackett.
Good afternoon. My name is Janina Rackett. I am a para and I have been one for 14 years. My plan was to come and sit up here and talk to you about how I am overworked and underpaid. But because I believe our children's voices are important to hear, I am going to allot my time to my daughter.
Good evening. My name is Jada Rackett. First, I'd like to say thank you for letting me speak to you today once again. I use the words once again because 60 years ago, I sat in this very same seat pleading for charge, change, I'm sorry. I was a student at Orchard Gardens at the time. This is when I was advocating for youth mental health, when my advocating for youth mental health began. I was nine years old and a kindergartner had gotten stuck with a needle on our playground and it made me afraid to go to school. Because of that, me and a bunch of other students, along with our parents, held a protest and standouts asking for a change. Today, I am a 10th grade dance major at Boston Arts Academy. My youth advocacy has taken me many places like Washington DC, interviewing presidential candidates like Bernie Sanders. My goal is and has always been to bring awareness to the trauma my peers and I face on a daily basis, just walking outside of our homes, some escaping the day-to-day traumas inside their homes, to only enter into a place that we are told to be our safe haven, school. But that is not the case. Students are experiencing more trauma due to the lack of resources and staffing. I'm sure I do not have to tell you the nationally recommended ratios of students to school counselors or student psychologists, but I'm going to tell you anyway. One counselor to every 250 students per school. One psychologist per every 500 students per school. Now let me ask you a question. If this was your niece, nephew, son or daughter, and they were experiencing some form of trauma and needed to talk to someone, you'd want the best for them, right? I do not have the answers to it all. But then again, I'm often told I am a child and I need to stay in a child's place. We as children should leave it up to the adults in the room to have our best interests at heart. But here I am, six years later, in the same building, almost having the same conversation, speaking with the same committee.
Thank you, your time is up.
I allotted my time. I allotted my time to her. She has two more minutes. I allotted my time to her. She has two more minutes. She had two minutes and I had two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking with the same committee, almost having the same conversation and feeling like you are still failing us. If I haven't heard, if I haven't heard or learned anything at my time at Orchard Gardens, I learned that in order to get the things that you want, you have to, you have to be direct and ask for them. So here it goes. There needs to be a cap on how many caseloads a counselor can take. We need more access to social, emotional and mental health specialists. You cannot expect us to feel safe if we are being forced to speak to mental health specialists in closets that have been turned into offices. We need a safe place. We need resources and educators need trauma trainings. This is why I'm here today speaking to you. We deserve to be in schools that provide before and after care, school care, family engagement and an integrated system of support. So we are here today to the school committee to say, this is what we want, this is what we deserve, and we can guarantee you that we'll get it. Put it in the contract so that our future is secure. Thank you.
Next. Next group of speakers are Damani Williams, Adrian Level, Cassandra Samuel and Asbury Lawton. Damani Williams.
Like I was, like everybody doing today, my name is, I'm Damani Williams. I'm a senior at the Jeremiah E. Burke. And basically, like I came here to talk about the change in the school name. And just basically, like I believe that like Ms. Johnson beautifully said, I feel like we should change the name in, in, in honor of Dr. Holland just because I had a chance to meet him and he was very inspirational to me. And I feel like with us, like with us changing the name, like I feel like, like it gives like the younger generation like a light to look forward to, just because me personally, I've been at the Jeremiah E. Burke since I was a freshman and I've been in BPS since I was in like second, third grade. And I feel like I never met Jeremiah E. Burke myself and I've, and I've met Dr. Holland. And I feel like he's had such an impact on me in just one interaction. So like I feel like, well, like the younger generation like coming in, they have a chance to physically see him and meet him. And like I feel like that could have definitely like a big like impact on them. Cause just because like, like I'm the man, like who he is. And I feel like the change is definitely needed and it's definitely like a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Adrian Level.
Hi, my name's Adrian Level. I'm from Grove Hall and I'm a BPS grad. I'm also the current program leader of BDEA 2.0's program, which is created to meet the needs of our Black and Brown young men by providing them with hands-on, culturally relevant and work-based curriculum. 2.0 has been located at the Timolte since 2019. The Timolte also houses our blended learning program servicing students who navigate parenting, full-time work and significant mental health diagnosis. Over 60 students are connected to our Timolte campus and programming is intended to double in the coming years. As you know, we were asked a month ago to vacate the Timolte by the end of June. We're thankful for the initial discussions we've had, but we still have no clear plan, destination or timeline, and we've not been granted the one-year planning period given to other schools impacted by the Green New Deal. More upsetting, our school has been separated due to facility constraints since 2018 and we're not mentioned in any facilities plans. The prospect of moving out of Nubian Square is devastating. Our students move between campuses daily for classes and to access our full-service health clinic with Whittier, with Whittier Street. Not to mention that our students chose BDEA because Nubian Square, it's a safe neighborhood for them. BDA is Boston's first competency-based alternative high school. 2.0 is Boston's only school program designed for Black and Brown males. And unlike most BPS schools, our 2.0 staff reflect our student population. With trusted partnerships with Madison Park Development Corporation, Page Academy and other partners in the area, we have 30 students and paid internships each school year. This is a key priority in need for our city and state, and it is working. The decision to move us hasn't taken into consideration our students and families who haven't been notified by the city of the potential move. And we feel at best forgotten and at worst dispensable. We're just asking for three things.
Your time is up.
Clarify where we can go in Nubian Square, create a clear timeline and communicate a plan that conveys to our families and children that they matter. Thank you.
Next speaker is Cassandra Samuel.
Good evening, members of the school committee, Superintendent Skipper and members of my Boston community. My name is Cassandra Samuel. I'm a product of Boston Public School and the proud library power at the Curly K-8 School in Jamaica Plain. I am here today because powers are the glue that holds the success of our school. We are needed to, we need to be paid the way truly to reflect our importance. How is my work as a library power essential? In my current role, I see around 500 students every week to help them find and check out high interest books. On top of this, I manage shelf-in processes and even deliver an instruction to students on how to access eBooks and audiobooks. This very library was built by me. I chose shelf-in, plastic book jackets and barcoding on thousands of books and created the library management system that we're using this day. These essential services are also delivered by other library powers in BPS, some who recently lost their job as library power and all will be moving to lower paying jobs in BPS or have decided to retire. During our weekly negotiation with BPS, I hear BPS say, we want to uplift our lowest paying workers. I stand before you today as one of your lowest paying workers. With all the work that I do, working as a library parent and in my after-school program, I still do not make enough money to own a home in a city. Many of my fellow members are receiving public assistance. Most of us work a second job or even third job to make ends meet. This is why we are asking for an additional increase in wages for powers in every year of this coming contract, as well as a same number of personal days and an early incentive as teachers. The work we do is valuable, so we should be value an increase of our pay. Today, ask, talk to any BTU member and they will tell you that powers are the backbone of our school. It is time that we are treated that way. We love our students, we love our school, we love our community. It's time for BPS to show up and show us some love. Thank you.
Next, next speaker is Asbury Lawton. Asbury Lawton.
Howdy. First off, I'd like to thank the young people for advocating for things that they believe in. I'm a strong advocate for that. Hi, my name's Asbury Lawton. I'm a 2.0, BDA 2.0 graduate and a current teacher assistant at Boston Day and Evening Academy. I am here because my school is being asked to move without a good plan. My school serves population like me that didn't thrive in traditional academic settings. And my population is less likely to graduate. But with schools like BDA 2.0, they can. 2.0 provided me with a stable, resource-rich environment. And those resources are dual enrollment, internships and engaging curriculum created by the teachers. I can't stress that, how important that is. I ask that the school, I mean, the district, communicate with Boston Day and Evening as a leadership and provide our school with a good plan for this coming fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next group is Hagar Sherman, Cafunda Banks, Denise Caraballo, Kimora James and Robert Jenkins. Hagar Sherman.
Good evening. My name is Hagar Sherman and this is my 10th year as an educator at Mario Man Academy, dual-language school in East Boston. Also, my second year as a school librarian and as a parent at the school. In our library, we currently serve over 700 students from kindergarten through eighth grade. Most of them are multilingual learners, many of them are newcomers. Our students visit the library for bi-weekly visits with their classes and on their own to get new books. Our space and our collection reflect our students' identities and languages, thanks in large part to the $90,000 investment that our library received. When students enter our library doors, they're fully aware of our three guiding principles. We have the freedom to read the books that we want to read and to express ourselves without judgment. We have the curiosity that guides us to discover new ideas and interests. And then we have love because learning begins with love. The library investment promised the library for every school. And this is what we continue to fight for. In the upcoming contract, we're proposing that every school be staffed with a part or full-time librarian based on student body size. Larger schools will have a librarian and a library paraprofessional and our larger schools will have two full-time librarians. This part is important. No library paraprofessional should be accessed under this proposal. Much of what we've accomplished in our library is thanks to the support of our library paraprofessional, Ms. Deanda Bay, who celebrated 25 years in our school this year. This is her third year in the library. Unfortunately, while my position is currently centrally funded, her position was not and she's losing her position at the end of this year. She's the one who greets students when they come in to get new books. She knows our collection better than anyone. She keeps us all in order and next year I'll be doing it all on my own. So for libraries to be the heart of their school, for students to have access to these places of freedom, curiosity, love and also joy, we ask that
Thank you very much, your time is up.
our students receive the libraries they deserve and that you support us in the BTU contract demands for fully staffed and funded libraries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cafunda Banks.
Good evening. My name is Cafunda Banks. I'm a third grade teacher at the Curly K-38 School in Jamaica Plain. And in short, what we are calling the district to do is to do inclusion right, not cheap. Our one, one of our top priorities for our contract campaign is to One of our top priorities for our contract campaign is to win language that will help guarantee that inclusion is done right. My personal experience of being on the school-based inclusion planning team for the past two years at the Curly K-8, myself, our school leader, and my colleagues spent months upon months putting a holistic plan together in order to transform our school of 935 students to sub-separate strands into a fully-included school. We went ahead with this bold new plan, thinking we had the district's blessing and support, because that's what we were told. We got staffing allocations that fulfilled only half our plan for one year. The following year, we basically got, "We're sorry, we can't help you with the plan that we made you create, but here's 1.5 allocation for your trouble." It honestly felt like a slap in the face. What was a 1.5 allocation going to do for our third, fourth, fifth, and middle-school grade levels who were desperately waiting for the support that they were promised? The Curly School is but one example. Across the district, other schools got the same treatment and had the bitter disappointment of facing their students and staff to inform them that they had been duped. It's not a good feeling. We have MLL students in the third grade and up who can't read. We have students in sub-separate classrooms who deserve the opportunity to access their federal right to the least restrictive environment, but may never have the chance. Clearly, inclusion planning teams were not enough to ensure that every student gets the services they deserve. So now we're asking for the following contract language. No educator should be required to provide instruction using more than one license simultaneously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Denise Caraballo.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Denise Caraballo. Soy madre de tres niños, dos tienen IP y dos están en BPS, uno en Blackstone y otro en Snowdon High School.
Good evening. My name is Denise Caraballo. I have three children, two have IEPs and two are in BPS, one at the Blackstone and one at Snowdon.
Hoy alzamos nuestras voces al unirnos madres, estudiantes, padres, educadores, y miembros de la comunidad.
Today, we raise our voices together in unison as mothers, fathers, students, educators, and members of the community.
Luchamos por los recursos, la estabilidad, y los servicios que merecen nuestros niños.
We're fighting for the resources, the stability, and the services that our children deserve.
Yo entiendo muy bien la importancia de tener suficientes recursos y estabilidad para beneficiar a nuestros estudiantes.
I understand very well the importance of having enough resources and stability to benefit our students.
Mi hijo en la escuela de Blackstone en este año tuvo tres maestros distintos y está terminando el año sin un maestro en el salón, solo con un paraprofesional, el cual ha tenido un trabajo muy fuerte.
I have, my son at the Blackstone has had three teachers, different teachers this year, and he's ending the year without any teacher in the classroom. Just a paraprofessional who has been working very, very hard.
Sin la estabilidad y los servicios que necesita mi hijo, no está avanzando como debe de ser.
Without the stability and the services that he needs, my child is not advancing as he should.
Sabemos que los maestros de las escuelas públicas de Boston están cada año más agotados porque se le está pidiendo que haga más con menos.
We know that the teachers of the public schools of Boston are every year more and more burned out because more is being asked of them with less.
Boston es el único distrito en el estado donde se espera que un educador satisfaga las necesidades de ESL y del IP de los estudiantes.
Boston is the only district in the state that expects one teacher to satisfy ESL and IP services for students.
Y al mismo tiempo brinda instrucción de educación general.
While at the same time doing general education.
Pedimos que se ponga fin a esta práctica. Tener múltiples licencias no es lo mismo que tener varios educadores.
We are asking for an end to this practice. Having multiple licenses is not the same as having multiple teachers.
Este modelo de pedirle a un maestro que haga varios trabajos no es justo ni para el maestro ni para los estudiantes.
This model of asking one teacher to do multiple jobs is not fair, not for the teacher nor for the student.
Y si seguimos con esta práctica, vamos a perder más maestro todavía, y nuestras escuelas van a tener menos estabilidad.
If we continue with this practice, we're going to lose even more teachers, and our schools will have even less stability.
Hoy nos unimos como padres, maestros, a demandar la inclusión hecha bien, aumentos dignos de salario y el bienestar de los estudiantes. Gracias.
So today, we are united as parents and teachers to demand inclusion done right, fair salary, and the well-being of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kimora James.
Hi, my name's Kimora James, and I'm a junior at the John D. O'Brien School of Mathematics and Science. I've been a BPS student for as long as I've been going to school, and I've always felt like I've gotten the short end of the stick when it comes to student resources and mental health support. I've attended three schools: Holmes Elementary, The Condon in South Boston, and The O'Brien. I left Holmes to go to The Condon as part of the Advanced Work Program, and in sixth grade, I transferred to The O'Brien, which is an exam school. I expected each school to be better than the last, but there's a very clear pattern of neglect when it comes to the buildings and the mental and academic support that the students and the teachers receive. I know how fortunate I am to attend The O'Brien, even though it has its setbacks, but I do acknowledge there are other BPS schools that don't even have libraries with certified librarians, proper athletic teams, and a funded arts program. I see no reason that the teachers and students have to struggle to provide themselves with the tools they need to learn, which is what the BPS committee is for. If BPS really cares about its staff and its students, it will allocate the proper funds, implement the right structures and ratios that will serve the community rather than burden them. This is what the students are fighting for. This is what the BTU is fighting for, and this is what needs to be put in the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Jenkins. Robert Jenkins.
Sorry, I'm in the IGA meeting with White Stadium as well, so I opened up a book today. Good evening. Superintendent Skipper, Chair, School Committee members, I'm here today. I'm a graduate of Madison Park, 1978, president of the Madison Park Alumni Association, member of the School Parent-School Site Council for the last 10 years. As you all know, every time I talk, I always talk about one thing: collaborations. It takes a village to raise a child, and we've got a packed house tonight. We have the teachers in here. Most importantly, we've talked about students, we've talked about community-based organizations, but we need to engage our parents. Our parents need to be engaged. Some numbers that people don't know, and I'm not going to bring them out here today, but a number of school, I mean, a number of BTU members on the collective bargaining agreement, school-site councils and school-parent councils are very, very important. And that is the first line of communication, as we know, with students, teachers, and parents. We have to do better as a whole. I'm also here tonight to speak about Dr. Al Holland, who was one of my mentors, and in renaming the Jeremiah Burke in his honor. You know, I think he's done a lot, especially for Madison Park. You know, yes, there are things to do. Now, my alma mater turns 50 next year, 2025. We're getting a brand-new renovation, and I understand, like, you know, we should not be pitting ourselves against the John D. O'Brien. We need to, like, partner that up, you know, number one. So if that's it, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. The next group of speakers are Sarah Harold, Mike Heischman, Jose Edwards, Maura Smith, and Dr. Ali Mohammed. Sarah Harold.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Harold, BPS parent of an autistic nonverbal child who attends a sub-separate classroom as a kindergartner. I'm testifying tonight on the culture and attitudes within BPS for our most vulnerable students, those with severe disabilities. Being an active member of the BPS community, I have heard and witnessed both BPS families and BPS staff diminish the needs and the value of our children, demonstrated by a parent spewing outrage, claiming, "I don't want those children in my kids' classroom," when referring to the implementation of an inclusion model. Then select staff referencing to children with disabilities as "not as intelligent", this on top of the generalized tone that those in sub-separate classrooms are difficult children to work with or being characterized as a tough classroom. While everyone is entitled to their opinion, it is BPS's duty to protect all children while under their supervision, both physically and emotionally, while maintaining access to curriculum for all. My son encountered many BPS-inflicted challenges this year. However, there's one that I never imagined would happen: the physical-emotional misconduct against my son by his classroom teacher, not once but twice. Within the first half of the school year, there was two 51As filed. Both incidents were witnessed by two different outside individuals. When I asked BPS what the outcome is, I'm informed that it's a labor relations issue. The tragic incident that occurred at The Condon showcases some of the cultural-based attitudes, improper staffing, as well as lack of staff training for a group of students who cannot defend themselves and may also not be able to communicate. What better individuals to lose your cool with than those who cannot speak and tell another adult?
30 seconds.
When I shared my concern over safety of school leadership, I was asked if I was seeking emergency placement. My reply was no. A child who's thriving and doing well should not have to leave when they're a victim. Adults should. My son is still in this classroom along with the same classroom teacher whose waiver license, according to the ELR system and DESI License Your Department, expired in 2008. BPS has made two things quite clear. One, students with severe disabilities are considered less. Two, protecting themselves was well before protecting children with severe disabilities. At what point will BPS start to treat those with severe disabilities as not less than?
Thank you. Mike Heischman. Mike Heischman.
Mike Heischman, in person, Boston Education Justice Alliance, Dorchester. According to the Boston Globe, May 23rd, the superintendent said that the district doesn't have the community's trust yet to enable extensive changes, including school closures. When you use the word "yet," you imply that you have been working to regain the community's trust. That has not been the case. Since you took office, you've worked tirelessly to earn our mistrust and have deserved our resistance. I only have time to give a few examples. When you took office, you cleaned house by targeting black and brown central office educators and replaced them with those who would be loyal to you. When Dr. Charles Grandson, the chief equity officer, did his job and informed you of his concerns, he was placed on administrative leave and later was fired. Without involving the O'Brien community, you and Mayor Wu came up with a racist plan to move the OB from the heart of the African-American community to white West Roxbury. You have refused this year with the community a long-range facilities plan. You have given those targeted school communities with proposed changes 39 days before the school committee will approve your plans. You have deliberately given them very little time at the end of the year to mobilize any opposition. They have been notified that you are not seeking their consent,
30 seconds.
just their compliance. You have an excellent racial equity planning tool. There is no public evidence that you use it in making important decisions. Most of the members of the multilingual task force publicly resigned because of your plans to continue to miseducate our children. The BTU's contract proposals have given you multiple opportunities to support quality and equity. One example: embrace inclusion done right.
Thank you. Jose Edwards. Could you please speak close to the microphone?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jose Edwards. I represent the community of color here in Boston. Born and raised here in Boston, I'm a Mattapan resident. I'm here in support of Dr. Albert Holland, the Burke being named after Dr. Albert Holland. Doctor, I have had the pleasure of being mentored by this great man. So many students he has sacrificed his life for in so many different ways, behind closed doors, walking in our streets, knocking on, going to homes, and pulling students. It's getting, I speak because I had a cousin who was murdered, and Dr. Holland went to his home when I was 13 years old and sat with our family. So seeing him back then, that stuck with me. As a grown man who worked in BPS, ran the Young Men's Middle School Conference, and being able, and asking for support in terms of running this conference that serviced over 2,000 boys, Dr. Holland was that man that stood up and said, "We have to do whatever we need to make sure our students, our young men, get the services they need." It may seem like I'm all over the place right now, but right now, this is real emotional. I'm 52 years old, and I've watched this man since I was 13 years old beat our streets with his feet, with leading, leading men and women to do what's right for our kids and our community.
30 seconds.
I'm sure there'll be a lot more people here to say more great things about this amazing man who is still alive. Dr. Johnson said it. We honor people when they're dead. We need to honor this man now.
Thank you. Maura Smith. Maura Smith.
Hello. My name is Maura Smith. I'm a BPS parent. I have four children in the system. One is at JFK and one is in Westone, and two will be entering Westone in the fall, in K-0. And I want to speak about the potential closure of Westone. I am also a parent whose children used to attend Mission Hill School, and so I know something about what it is to endure a school closure. I know firsthand how brutal and traumatic it is to the teachers, staff, students, and family that make up its close-knit caring community. We were given two weeks' notice that Mission Hill was closing, and that the year before, there was plenty of evidence that that was the plan. And for that year, fear, uncertainty, and the feeling of being considered disposable by BPS lived in our teachers' minds and bodies and in our own, and eventually in our children's, who could sense an impending doom. We're still dealing with the impacts of this, with some psychological fallout with some of my kids. Doom, trauma, these words might sound melodramatic, but I assure you they are not. Closing a school rips apart a community, and when it is not done thoughtfully with care, compassion, and diligence, it embeds within the students, families, and teachers who go there a deep distrust of the district and the larger school system of which it is a part. I can speak to this from personal experience. I understand enrollment is down. I understand that sometimes hard decisions have to be made. But when the stakes are so high, when so much trauma and cynicism and mistrust can result, these decisions need to be undertaken with extra care, compassion, and diligence. They should not be rushed, and they should include all stakeholders, most especially those like the teachers and families who will be impacted the most. None of that has happened with the reckless proposal to close Westone and merge it with The Henigan. At a May 31st meeting with the Westone community, the representatives from the Capitol Planning Committee and the district admitted that they had never talked directly to any teacher, staff, student, or member, family member about the closure. They could give us no concrete details about what the closure would look like. These are basic questions they should have been able to answer. They're urging you to rush to make a decision about closing this school with scant information and no community engagement. They gave you five weeks to consider it for a decision that will upend the lives of the teachers and families of Westone. I urge you to reconsider this and at the very least, delay it.
Next. Next speaker is Dr. Ali Mohammed. Dr. Ali Mohammed.
Good evening. Good evening. Salaam and shalom. My name is Dr. Ali Mohammed. I'm here with my wife. Or Tensia, excuse me. And I'm here, I'm here to advocate for a great educator, Mr. Michael Crawley out of the Murphy School, who's done exceptional work and is a run of fear of being
Could you please talk closer to the microphone?
I'm here to support a local educator who's I'm here to support a local educator who's in need of community support, and we as a community have rallied around supporting this individual who have done exceptional work in our local communities for all the children of the schools that he serves.
Mr. Crowley is a community field coordinator at the Murphy School for the past 12 years. Mr. Crowley is an invaluable community member. Mr. Crowley is someone from the kindergartens up to the eighth graders that can go and talk to him and connect with him. Over the past year, I have gotten to know Mr. Crowley just by watching him in the yard as he connects with the students that they come in the morning. He is there to give them a hug when they need a hug. He is the one that put together mentoring program with our local police department and fire department so they can come to the school and mentor the young people. Mr. Crowley has also this year got together, created a fundraiser for together $5,000 to bring the disabled student for the first time in 10 years- to go to the Menino Park where they haven't been out in any type of field trips. So today, I'm really asking us to think about Mr. Crowley and how it would affect the student if he was to just be taken out of the school and just the impact of sense of belonging that the school would miss. But also, just to talk about Mr. Crowley's proven leadership, his continued to create the stability for the students within the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Next group, next group of speakers are Randy Cruthard, Heidi Winston, and Erica Herman. Randy Cruthard?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak about Dr. Holland and renaming the Jeremiah Burke. Might get a little tied up a little bit, but I apologize. I'm going to start off with just a personal story. Have you ever met a gentle giant? I have, and his name is Dr. Holland, the former principal of the Jeremiah E. Burke. As a child, the Burke was a place of solace for so many young people, including myself. Dr. Holland knew all the students by name and walked the hallways with a sense of purpose. Growing up, I dreamed of having a better future for myself and my family. Like many other students from that era, we're talking about the 90s, when Blue Hill Ave was really bad, there were seven gangs and there was a lot of distractions. I, one, could have joined a gang, sold drugs, or just given up. Each day, I walked up Blue Hill Avenue, I passed by people doing things that no young person should see. However, when I arrived to 90 Washington Street, Dr. Holland reminded me that I could do and be anything. Dr. Holland encouraged me and all the students, I repeat, all the students he passed in the hallway to dream big. His belief in me was a guiding light. My mother, as a single parent, couldn't afford to pay for me to go to college. However, Dr. Holland and my teachers recognized my athletic ability, along with Ms. Harris, who's sitting right over there, and Mr. Rice and Ms. Lee Neves, pushed me to play basketball in the ninth grade because it kept, in the end, Mr. Holland kept the school doors open, and I was able to stay late, chat with him in the office, and stay off the streets. As a result, I earned a full basketball scholarship to James Madison University. I currently still hold the basketball records in the state of Massachusetts and for Boston Public Schools. Today, I work for Boston Public Schools, where I encourage young people, just as Dr. Holland encouraged me, to dream big, work hard, and have a good heart. With that being said, in the honor of Dr. Holland's profound impact on countless students' lives, I believe it's fitting to rename the Jeremiah E. Burke after Dr. Holland.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Heidi Winston.
Good afternoon. My name is Heidi Winston. I've been a school nurse in Boston Public Schools for over 20 years. And, okay. Public education in Boston is failing our city's young people. The problems facing our students include inadequate access to healthy food, spiking homelessness, and untreated mental health issues, and more. These hardships are the result of budget and policy priorities that place profits over people. Increasingly, our children must rely on support from our school system. This need has not been remotely reflected by the school budget and staffing. There's a shortage of paraprofessionals, social workers, nurses, as well as teachers. Paraprofessionals or assistant teachers are paid too low for economic survival in the city of Boston, leaving positions unfilled. Our teachers and school staff are asked to educate and care for our kids without sufficient resources, which leads to burnout and illness. This is so for school nurses. I am now speaking for a nurse who, in one particular school, takes care of over 650 students. Their situation is not atypical. The daily average visit is 60 students. You will never go to see your healthcare provider, and they see a lot of people. They do not see nearly that many. It's about 20 at the most. They do skilled nursing on a daily basis, administer insulin, do tube feeds, et cetera. On one particular day, which is not also atypical, there were three ambulance calls for a motor vehicle accident, seizure, and a suicide attempt. The time it took to collaborate with EMS, BPD, the best team, and a neurologist was extremely time consuming, all while needed to use translators and having Aspen down.
Thank you very much.
We need to think about our students' safety. This understaffing is unacceptable. Thank you.
Written testimony. Thank you. Next speaker is Erica Herman.
My name is Erica Herman, the former principal of Gardner-Pallott Academy. First, they came for my black and brown colleagues at the central office. I remained silent because I did not work at bowling. Then they came for my principal colleagues across the city. I remained silent because they were not in my region. Then they came for my colleague in my network. I remained silent because they were not in my neighborhood. Then they came for me. I remained silent because they silenced me. Then they came for all the people who supported me. I am now free from the Boston Public Schools, and I will no longer remain silent. The institution where I dedicated my entire professional career has gone to great lengths to try to destroy my reputation and call into question my character. I have heard statements made by victim blamers as to why I deserve this treatment. Some professional colleagues have joined in the mobbing, spreading rumors about our finances, and justifying the actions because some staff wrote a letter behind my back that I never even received. There have been attempts to silence others who are speaking on my behalf, spreading more lies about some of our families and our dedicated board members. If there were concerns with my performance, I am entitled to structured feedback, due process, and progressive discipline. Instead, I received an exemplary evaluation in June, and I was elevated to mentor new principals this fall. There has been no clarity as to why the investigation was even launched at GPA in the first place. I reported discrimination to the Office of Equity, and the next day, I was placed on paid administrative leave where I languished for six months. BPS actions caused this confusion and chaos to our school, disrupting the education of our students, silencing our families, and harming dedicated employees' lives. Principals are superhuman on the front lines, making magic happen every day in our schools. When principals scream for support, the BPS safety chat indicates this administration seems to care more about optics, celebrating when they squash a story in the media instead of truly providing the depth of support principals need to thrive. I have come to recognize that I do not matter to this administration-
Thank you very much.
...and that despite knowing the truth, they have proceeded with protecting the institution overvaluing human lives. If you are an employee who is being abused by BPS, please reach out to join the coalition. You matter, and you are not alone. Thank you.
Next group of speakers are Lauren O'Malley Singh, Aleah Holland, Rob Garrison, Giovanni Burgos, and Brianna Kerbel. Lauren O'Malley Singh.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Lauren O'Malley Singh, and I serve as a school-based nurse for Boston Public Schools. I serve alongside over 200 nurses at our 119 schools. I've practiced nursing for 13 years, 12 of which were in acute care, and I am in my sixth year of school nursing. I found my home in public health. The work we do is a privilege and it's an honor. It's often misunderstood. School-based nurses in Boston Public Schools serve the most vulnerable and therefore the most important people in our city, our children. And our work goes beyond Band-Aids and Tylenol, for which we receive an annual budget of less than $1 per child. Today, I facilitated an onsite dental clinic. I facilitated state mandated screenings. In between those clinics, I serviced type 1 diabetics, supported a self-catheterization, and explained to a family and helped provide patient education around a new diagnosis of schizophrenia. This is an average day. I am one nurse in a certified newcomer school of 670 students, triaging upwards of 30 students a day. Case management is taking over and making it impossible for me to do my job. Case management includes updating student immunizations. It includes helping a student who just arrived to the U.S. last month to find health insurance, get a doctor, and get vaccinated on a catch-up schedule. At present, we have 340 students in my building who do not have the correct documented vaccination status. This is a public health concern. I raise this issue along with others to Boston Public Schools Health Services Administration. I have been told to make personal phone calls-
Thirty seconds.
...to each of the, thank you, each of these 340 families to assist with this catch-up. I do not speak three of the five languages spoken in my community, and I don't know how I would physically call 340 families by myself. Next year will be no different. Our school's going to be 800, and I'm going to get a half of a nurse. This staffing allocation was not based on science, national recommendations, nor data provided by the nurses on the ground. Health Services Leadership's response for this call to help is demonstrative to the attitude Health Services has taken towards supporting school-based nurses.
Thank you. Aleah Holland.
Hello. My name is Aleah Holland, Dorchester resident, Latin School alum, and proud daughter of Albert Holland, here to speak in support of the renaming of the Burke to the Albert D. Holland High School. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the Mayor's Commission of Black Men and Boys who stand behind me in support of the renaming. It was very important for me to come here today and speak in support of my father and to speak about the character of the greatest man I know. I've been watching him and admiring him from a young age, as he is used to bring me everywhere with him. Even before I could understand the impact and dedication he has made to the Boston Public School community, I could understand that he was adored. Whether we were being stopped in the grocery store or at the mall, I noted how people's faces would light up to say hello to their former headmaster. They'd look down at me and say, "Your father was my headmaster," and go on to praise him. It wasn't until I got older that I truly understood my father's purpose for amplifying the voices of those that often go unheard and his passion for uplifting others. For over 40 years, he has dedicated himself to the children, teachers, and administrators of Boston Public Schools. Even in retirement, I watch him wake up at 5:00 a.m. every day, get ready for work, and head to school. I've watched how many have called on my father for wisdom, his support, a helping hand, and he shows up every time and delivers, and he does it with a smile on his face. He is led by example in showing me you fight for what is right and what you believe in. The Burke is where my father's legacy started, where he spent a majority of his career, and where he impacted thousands of students in unparalleled ways. He is a selfless man, and as Dr. Reverend Michael Lee Haynes would say, "He will give you the last shirt off his back." I hope this committee can help us now honor his work, his commitment, his dedication, and his impact. There is no one more deserving of having their name honored than the Dr. Albert Holland. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Tito Jackson, and I'm Chair of the Commission on the Status of Black Men and Boys. We voted unanimously to change the name. The only thing that Al Holland has ever failed at is retirement. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Rob Garrison.
Good evening, Superintendent and members of the school committee. A special hello-
Could you please speak closer to the microphone?
And a special hello to Chair Robinson. I am the parent of two children at the Westone Early Learning Center. I want to first also start off with, two minutes is not enough time to really sing the praises of this particular school, so I will be as brief as I can. The Westone is a thriving small school community that demonstrates success in educating the whole child in a developmentally appropriate way. We may be a small school and serve children K zero to first grade, yet through the ingenuity and dedication of the talented staff, Westone prepares its students for success with a strong foundation to transition into any school. The Westone has faced challenges and continues to face them, as do all schools within a district. But I believe that in a district like BPS, we can collectively and innovatively and collaboratively find solutions. I ask you to vote no on this proposal and keep the Westone open. This will not affect the plans to restructure the Henigan School. I ask that you vote no to the merger in particular so that we can keep this open and then continue working to develop a striving community. I would like the district to work directly with the community to make plans to involve targeted Westone community engagement and problem solving-
Thirty seconds.
-not citywide engagement, which doesn't actually address the concerns of our particular community. As was spoken before, there were only one moment of, on May 9th was the first announcement of this, but we had not had any direct collaboration or proposal with that. The other aspect of it is if the merger goes through without a fully planned out execution, I want to think about what-
Your time is up.
...be on that, as can be seen by what other successful-
Please send me your written testimony. Thank you. Next speaker is Giovanni Burgos.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Giovanni Burgos. I have been a bus monitor for 19 years, and now unfortunately, I am a vice president for the Monitor Union. I am here today because my colleagues and I, we would like to have a meeting with the superintendent regarding a lot of bad behavior that's going on with management. And also, the management bring to my attention that the monitors is being stealing. If that's true, so I would like to hold BPS responsible for training monitors, become a criminal, because we used to be making $27 before for a bus run. It's equal 45 minutes up to an hour, and now we are making $19 an hour. I'm not trying to excuse any bad behavior from nobody, but you guys have to understand that $19 an hour is not enough to support our family and pay our rent. So I see many times the director, he come here and telling you guys that we are making more money now than before. So if this is true, so why monitor, according to them, are stealing money? That's not make no sense to me. So another thing, who going to hold accountable those management? They have a monitor up there working, and they are not paying them either. So all of them are stealing each other. That's my personal opinion. So when any management bring to my attention-
Your time is up.
Any stealing issue, I asked them for a paperwork and they refused to give it to me, and now I feel like they've been trying to silence me as a union member. I'm not going to allow nobody to silence me. Thank you.
Brianna Kerbel.
Hi, my name is Brianna Kerbel, and I've been a Boston Public School nurse for six years. As school nurses, no matter what is on our to-do list, our priority is the student in front of us. But without dedicated, protected planning time, we have students in front of us back-to-back for the entire day. We must choose between multitasking while taking care of students, or allowing the other parts of our job to not get done. Our students deserve our full attention. They deserve to feel safe and seen and heard. Some of the things that we're doing while we're seeing students that we have to do are accurately documenting each and every visit and contacting family members when their child is ill or injured, monitoring student medication supply and expiration dates, and contacting family members when it's running low or expiring soon, reviewing student physicals and immunization records, entering them into their school medical record, again contacting families when we need more information, ensuring teachers have emergency plans for their students and updating them throughout the year, coordinating with our school leaders and Health Services to schedule mandatory health screenings, collecting student health data that's required for state surveys several times throughout the year, creating individual health plans for each student with a medical condition, planning for field trips, which means making sure every student with a medical condition has their medication and many signed forms. And before we leave each day, we have to make sure that our office is all set up for the next day, just in case we're sick. So while we're trying to do all of those requirements for our job, we also have a constant influx of students coming in. And it's not safe, it's not sustainable, and it's not fair to our kids. They deserve our full attention. They deserve to go to the nurse and have the nurse hear them, see them, and not also be trying to do 100 other things. It increases our risk of error, and it's not safe, it's not sustainable. It's crucial that we have dedicated uninterrupted time.
You, your time is up. Next group of speakers are Nicolás Salópes, Erin Birmingham-Andu, John Rice, and Deidre Manning. Nicolás Salópes.
Good evening. My name is Nicolás Salópes, currently serving as the Family Engagement Director at the Gynae Pilot Academy for the last eight years. Ironically, also a former parent of tech Boston on the superintendent's keeper. It was painful to listen to Superintendent Skipper tell the city council last week that the district do not retaliate against the employee. Within less than 24 hours after notifying the district I will be returning from my medical leave in May, I received a laid-off notice, without so much as even a phone call to notify me of that decision. The staff had been told that the decision was due to the position being on X R funds, but there's documentation that clearly show this is not accurate. Again, this administration had not been truthful to the GPA community. It is my belief that my advocacy for our families, children, and the school leadership team had led to my impending termination at June 30th. GPA was one a labor or love, but today embodies toxicity, uncertainty, and fear. Our undocumented family no longer feel safe and supported, and instead feel threatened by the current practice of the school. I recently discovered that Superintendent Skipper visited GPA last Friday to greet the staff. Despite numerous requests for her family to meet with her, the superintendent ignored all the requests. The actions of this administration speak volumes, demonstrating that family in BPS have the value and disregarded. To make matter worse, rumors have been created about some of our dedicated family members, making them fearful or speaking up even coming to the school. Families who spoke are now being targeted with accusation. It is shameful to see adults behaving in such harmful and hurtful ways toward the family that we are supposed to be serving. Families are reporting they are feeling desperate and hopeless, and many are exploring ways to get out of the Boston Public School. While Superintendent publicly stated GPA is not closing, there's zero trust in the community that this would be honored. The family of the Jackson man were told the same thing repeatedly, and now the school is closed.
Thank you. Next speaker is Erin Birmingham-Andu. John Rice.
Good evening, school committee. My name is John Rice. I'm a former Boston Public School student and a retired Boston Public School teacher. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Albert Holland. So dating back to the 1970s, during the height of forced busing, Mr. Holland was at South Boston High School in the mix during all the racial tensions in South Boston. And from there, he went over to the Jeremiah Burke High School in the mid-'80s at the height of gang activity and all of the tensions and violence in the city. The Burke High School had the reputation as the toughest high school in the city of His leadership there, I was one of his staff members, it was just so much love in the building from all of the teachers, the students, the community. He was the most outstanding leader. And he's still serving BPS for 50 years. There was trouble at Latin, Mr. Holland went there. There was trouble at Latin Academy, Mr. Holland went there. There was trouble at Madison Park, Mr. Holland was there. He's the most beautiful person that I know. He is a wonderful human being. And I know that's not a requirement for this, but there's hundreds of people like me who feel that way about Mr. Holland. He's a beautiful person, he deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deidre Manning.
Good evening. My name is Deidre Manning. I'm a Dorchester resident and single parent and sole financial supporter of two daughters. On April 24th, I attended the school committee meeting where the exam school initiative program was discussed, and it was said to be under-enrolled. The next day, on the 25th, when my fourth-grade daughter was invited to the program by email, there was no mention that this was an application, but rather a registration link was provided. I filled out the registration the next day, and now BPS on June 4th, yesterday, in an email informs me that the program does not have a space for my daughter. Dorchester is an incredibly diverse neighborhood. The exam school policy uses a flawed methodology of only surveying 2.5% of the population, and the remaining 97.5% of a neighborhood socioeconomic score is derived from that statistically small sample. In any given year, virtually any neighborhood in Dorchester could find itself classified as a tier seven or eight neighborhood, where there are two or three times the number of applicants for the 125 seats allocated to each tier. Because BPS has not taken the steps to make the policy equitable, my daughter should be able to receive tutoring that I can't afford to pay for, so that she can be prepared to compete for an exam school seat. Virtual perfection is unfortunately the standard for students who live in tiers seven and eight, which is a distinct possibility for her in two years. As an aside, this inequity could be fixed by simply allocating the number of seats per tier based on the number of applicants. This would give every applicant in the city of Boston an equal chance to compete for an exam school seat. How can Boston Public School administrators notify families five weeks after they were invited to register for a program that the program does not have space? What other options do families have in June to find suitable camp experiences for their children? Every family who filled out the registration for the program should be provided a seat. Allocate additional funding and find additional teachers to provide an enrichment program for public school students who want an opportunity to compete for a seat at the O'Brien Latin Academy or Boston Latin School. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, that concludes our first hour of testimony. The remaining speakers will have an opportunity to testify at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Pravex, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. We'll now move on to action items. Our only action item this evening is the grants for approval, or approvals, excuse me, totaling $979,844. Now I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. So there's several grants before committee this evening. One is the Brookline Center DMH Grant, and as you'll see, this is specific for the O'Brien School to be able to provide support for their school-based bridge program. And that program itself supports students who have either serious emotional disturbance or mental illness that need additional support. So this is seed funding for that startup. The second has to do with our EA Shelter Supplement Reimbursement Grant. This one here is a reimbursable grant that's used specifically to help support costs associated with the state's emergency shelters as we take our migrant students in. This really is in support to ensure that students who are homeless have access to educational programming services, opportunities, and also that our district staff are properly trained to work with our homeless population. There's also one for English High School. This was brought up, actually, probably a good six to eight months ago. This is a ramp project that would allow portability and accessibility for students getting in and out of English who need the ramp for wheelchair or other mechanical accommodation. So I would just ask for those three grants, the committee's support.
Are there any questions? Superintendent, could you explain a little bit more about the EA Shelter Supplemental Reimbursement? How does this fit with other monies, or have we received other monies for this?
We have. This is, this may be, and I may need CFO Bloom on this one, but this is, I believe, our second installment of dollars that have come through to be able to support migrant student population.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Good evening, committee. So this is the state's second installment of reimbursement for migrant students. It's actually our first, like, the first time we've received it, because we didn't have any students in the time period for the first installment. There may be a third installment, which would be our second payment, which would be for the period from March through June. We had 135 migrant students we accredited for during the period from December through March, and this is a reimbursement, so we can apply it to back costs, but the state has also allowed us to roll it forward through the upcoming year, so we can continue to expend the money through next school year to support students. I'm working closely with our colleagues and family and community advancement and others to ensure that we are putting the services in place.
Right. And just as a distinction, this is particularly for students who are served in the state shelters, not for migrant students who are coming in and registering with us for other means.
Thank you.
Just a very quick question. Superintendent, I'm really glad we've been able to find the funding, and thanks for BPTA for the funding for the accessibility ramp at East Bar at English High School, excuse me. I'm just wondering, will that work be done during the summer, or when do we think that's going to be done?
Yes, this is slated to be done and finished for the start of the school year.
Perfect, great. Thank you. Glad we were able to solve that.
Yeah, just have one question. You mentioned there are 135 students who need emergency shelter? Is that correct?
Yeah, the, we work with the state to sort of count the number of students who qualify for the program. There were 135 students over the period involved. They may not have been with us every single day. Some of the students initially registered with us and then moved to other communities, but yes, 135.
So there is a process implicit to identify students who are in need of emergency shelter?
It's the, it's the state-run program.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
This is predominantly mass CAS, the rec center.
Yeah, CAS, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? There's any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing now the grants, hearing none of the grants are approved. We'll now move on to reports. We have three reports this evening. Ms. Pravex will assist us in keeping us on time, and definitely I encourage members to seek clarification from staff for any unanswered questions, providing an opportunity to gather information between meetings. So our first report is on the interim salary, or did we switch the order?
No, I think we were doing the interim salary first, and I think CFO Bloom is coming up.
Okay, just checking. Our first report is the interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds. Committee members will recall, this is an annual request the finance team makes to the school committee to keep our district moving smoothly, but same to keep this presentation and discussion under 15 minutes. Before I invite Chief Financial Officer David Bloom to present, I'll ask the superintendent to give opening remarks.
Really, I'm just going to hand it over to keep this quick. This is something that's perfunctory that we do, and so it allows us to keep the district moving during summer months. So CFO Bloom?
Yeah, so typically for grants, we come to you for approval before we start spending the money. Our federal entitlement grant applications are due to the state in sort of August, September, and we don't typically get approval back from the state till October at the earliest, especially for big grants like Title I. We would like to start spending the money, especially on salaries, at the start of the year. So this vote allows us to start expending the money before you formally approve the grant, and then we'll come back to you in the fall to formally approve the grant when we receive it. And the grants are all listed in the memo you received.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. I'll now open it up to the committee, questions and comments.
Hi. Are these always the same grants that we get, that we apply and get every year? Or is there opportunities to look into other fundings? Just curious on how we identify them.
So we do adjust the list every year. These are basically, it's a list of grants that we have confidence we're going to receive, and so we don't want to wait until we get the formal recognition. They're mostly state or federal grants, because if it was a private funder, they would just tell us now we can have the money, and then we would bring it to you for a formal approval. An example of a grant we added more recently was the Strategic Improvement Grant, the Strategic Improvement Plan Grant, when it was added by the state, so we know that year three of that grant is coming, right? But the state doesn't formally award it yet, and we want to make sure that the positions associated with that grant can continue until it's formally awarded.
Chair, we're not voting on this today, it's just a present.
Yeah, next week. Next meeting, sorry, next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other, any additional questions? Thank you. The committee looks forward to taking action on this request at our next meeting. Our second report is the renaming of Jeremiah E. Burke High School, proposing to be Dr. Albert D. Holland High School of Technology. Let's make sure this presentation and discussion don't go over about 40 minutes. Thank you. All right. I will now invite Dr. DePina to present, but first I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks.
Great, thank you, Chair. And just, it was really wonderful to see, and so deserved, to see so many former students, former staff, and community members speak on behalf of Dr. Holland. I can honestly say he's just one of the best people I've ever had the opportunity to work with, certainly has been a mentor for me throughout my time in BPS. So tonight you'll hear the formal proposal for renaming Jeremiah E. Burke High School to the Dr. Albert D. Holland High School of Technology. Dr. Holland, as a lifelong resident of Boston, is also a retired, we say that loosely, BPS administrator who spent 50 years working in schools, including serving as the head of school at the Burke. A former BPS student himself and student athlete, Dr. Holland also served in district leadership positions, including BPS High School Superintendent. He has also been recognized and published for his many accomplishments in the community and the field of education. Since his retirement in 2008, Dr. Holland has continued to support the work of the district by coming out of retirement to support different schools, and I think you heard a list of them earlier. Dr. Holland's currently still giving back to BPS through his mentoring, his coaching of new district school leaders. At this point, it's my pleasure to turn this over to Deputy DePina, as well as Head of School Emil Carr Silva, as well as Greg Hill. And I think, Sam, we're going to hold on you? Okay, great. So I'll turn it over to Emil Carr and to Greg. Tomorrow is the Burke's graduation, so we also want to be respectful to, right, that it won't be. it won't rain, and make sure with Emil Carr's time that we respect that. So Dr. DePina may follow if we run out of time. So with that, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Superintendent, members of school committee. I am the proud head of school at the Jeremiah Burke High School, and I consider myself to be a product of Al Holland. On April 26, I turned in a proposal to the superintendent in really honoring the legacy of this man that has done so much for the community at large, not only for the Burke High School, for Black and Brown students and the city of Boston. I had the pleasure to stand with Al last week in front of the Jeremiah Burke High School and witness cars stopping, people stepping out and coming to salute him. And students at the Jeremiah Burke High School also really appreciated that man that they heard so much about, but they came to also salute him. And, you know, it is emotional for me, because as you know, I'm stepping now also this year. So with that said, on April 26, I turned in a proposal to the superintendent to the renaming of the Jeremiah Burke High School. This process was initiated, you know, in March 2023, and we engaged various stakeholders in the process that went from the, you know, alumni, school site council, students, parents, and community members at large, including face-based community and elected officials in the process. We held two public meetings that were advertised in the Bay banner, Bay State banner, City Boston Clerk's office, and social media. I am, you know, I was a little bit, you know, emotional to see that so many came in support of this, this motion. We had 775 subscriptions on this for support. The signatures that we call a collective for support. An unanimous vote was taken by the school site council on June 6, 2023, to adopt a new name to the Jeremiah Burke High School. You heard a lot about who Dr. Albert Holland really is. I was sitting in there and still feeling the emotion, you know, through me, to see so many people coming and acknowledge who this man really is, who this man who is like somebody that is not retired. He didn't, he doesn't know what it is, right? So just want to talk a little bit about our next step after this hearing and this presentation, is that an internal planning committee launched to support the school. We are going to create one to support the, you know, the, this process right now and celebrate the name. Assuming a positive school-community vote, the group will extend to include external partners, including the J. E. Burke alumnis, which, you know, proudly present Mr. Hill, you know, throughout my leadership at the Burke has been one of my backbone as a, you know, one of those products of Albert Holland that knows the Burke. He lived the experience of being a student at Burke when there was, you know, the Burke was, you know, going through a lot of challenges under, but Albert Holland taught us how to look at the children individually and stand up for them and not look at what we didn't have to get that job done at that time, that he didn't have to get that job done the way he wanted to do. But he taught me that you just look at the children, you love them. And sometimes it's not what you teach them, it's how you treat them. And that's what I will leave behind, my legacy at Jeremiah Burke High School.
Excuse me, good evening. I didn't have a chance to testify this evening, because I know I'll be sitting here presenting with Mr. Silver. But I'm just going to take a few minutes. I met Dr. Holland as a 15-year-old student at the Jeremiah Burke High School. I transferred in from Dorchester High for disciplinary reasons, and the first day of school, he heard about me and brought me into his office. And he connected me with a mentor, Mr. Rice, that, you know, he told me he wanted to keep an eye on me. And, and there's a few things that Dr. Holland did. The first thing he did was he loved on me. The second thing he did was he believed in me. And the third thing he did was he empowered me as a young person. And people often say adults that come in their lives may have saved their life, and I don't always believe that. I believe doctors save lives, but that being empowered me and gave me the ability to save my own life. And working back at the Burke for the past 17 years and being a part of this process and honoring Dr. Holland, we had the pleasure of bringing him up to talk to some students a few weeks ago. And I introduced Mr. Holland to our students that I have relationships with, and how I introduced him was, everything I do for you is what he did for me. And that was the instant connection that he had with these students, from seventh grade all the way to 12th grade. So they was automatically connected with Dr. Holland just by how I introduced him. But after about 15 minutes, and Dr. Holland telling his story from starting from South Boston High School, all the way up to taking the job at the Burke, I saw that that connection was more so with him and his students, and it had no longer anything to do with me. And I just sat there, he had these students' attention for about an hour and a half. And we all in, you know, education, you know how hard it is to keep the attention of some seventh graders and eighth graders for that long. But there's that connection. And at that time, I, as I sat and watched him talk to our students, I said, this is, this is much bigger than Dr. Holland. I think we started this process in honoring him and his legacy, but this is much bigger than him. And this is not about to erase their legacy at the Burke High School. I'm a Burke grad and Burke alum and through and through, and I'm going to still wear my Burke gear. But this is about the future of our young people.
Yes, it is.
And I saw the way they took to him. And I just looked and I said, this is much, much, much bigger than Dr. Holland at that very moment. So I just want to say that the time is now. I know change, sometimes people get uncomfortable with change and just get kind of used to things just being how they are. But it's time to honor this man. And again, I think it's, it's not for him. This is why young people that can take pride in knowing that this man walked the same halls that they walk. So thank you. I just had to, to get that off my heart.
So we, we just, you know, when you talk about Al Holland, you don't need, you know, a presentation. All you heard this, you know, this evening speaks a little bit, not what we all know about him as a leader, as a father, you know, as an advocate for students of color, but for, not only for students of color, you know, but for everyone. Everybody counted on that. Everybody counts for Al Holland. So for our next step, you know, we will continue to, you know, with a committee to launch the support of the school in celebrating the name change, taking, I'm assuming a positive, you know, school committee vote that the group will, and will extend the group to include external partners, Jeremiah Burke alumni, and everyone else who initiated this process. So as I leave BPS, I'm looking forward to come and celebrate the renaming of the Burke High School into Dr. Albert Holland School of Technology.
I'd like to now open it up to members.
Thank you, Chair. For those that don't know, I'm a graduate of the Jeremiah E. Burke, the valedictorian of class of 2012. Dr. Johnson, you were there with Mayor Manino when y'all gave me my Reebok backpacks. Still have it? I think the more I've been learning about this legacy, it started to, it started to make sense why some of my mentors said some things to me. Mr. Silver, you are one of them. You were the assistant principal at the time when Dr., she's not here today, McIntyre was the principal. And you went with me with my valedictorian lunch, because my family, like a lot of immigrant families, could not take the day. And I remember you asked me, you're like, where's, where's your parents? Where's your cousins? We're Cavarians, you got to find somebody to go with you. And I couldn't, and you went with me that day until this day, and I was at the lunch last week. I kind of was emotional about that. I also have another mentor, which is Paolo DeBarros, which was a student at the Burke when Dr. Holland was the principal. And I called him, I was like, what do you know about this guy? Like, why is everybody so excited about him? Because it was my ignorance of not really knowing the historical context when it comes to the administration of the Burke, right? And now it makes sense why Paolo shaped or mentored me the way that he did, even helping me navigate the Burke at the time. It was a turnaround school from 2010 to 2012. And that was because of Dr. Holland, right? And I know sometimes as alum, we're so stuck on keeping what we know, because I was like, why are you changing it? I don't get it, like. And like you said, it's about the future and the impact that someone that's still here, because we need to give folks their flowers while they can actually still smell them. So I just appreciate the work that you all have done with the community of really amplifying the impact that he has done, not only at the Burke, like you said, but in the district, in the community, and you all have my total support. With that being said, I still have a question. Just wanted to learn a little bit more on the, not specifically on the technology piece and the name of the school. I've been away for a little while, so just wanted to learn, how is that, like, is the programming, the curriculum? I just wanted to learn a little bit more, and how is the district going to support that to make sure it's living it up to its name? Because technology is very important, and we're going to the digital world, so I'm very excited to hear that that's what we're heading towards. So if you could share more about that.
Well, we are in our second year of, you know, our DVE program, digital, you know, digital and visual program. We are in the second year right now. We have, you know, extended the program to, including some of the partners. You know, one of the biggest partner that we have right now is RCC, who supports us in the, in the process. We, two weeks ago, we inaugurated one, our studio, right, with two communications studios where, you know, members of the Boston Public Schools and RCC came in and, you know, were listening to the children that are part of this process and how, you know, it has changed their view into their careers for the future. We also have partnership with Benjamin Franklin Institute. We, you know, for the past two years, we have, you know, some students have full rights for $200,000, you know, full scholarship for that. This year, we also launched the, you know, the aviation program. And I can proudly say that, you know, two, two weeks ago, one of our students received his, you know, pilot, his first, you know, pilot license. We, he, you know, demonstrated that by, you know, really flying one of our, you know, with the help of one of our partners, he really flew a plane, was able to take off and landed safely, you know, and that, you know, that was something that was part of the news. And we, as we continue to extend our partnership for students and make sure that we have, they have access to, you know, state-of-the-art technology right at the Burke right now.
No, thank you. I just, I thought it was important to sort of talk a little bit more, what, what does that mean in terms of the naming? I'm excited to join you all tomorrow for your graduation as your keynote speaker. Thank you, Chair.
I mean, thank you for this presentation, and I think also, when you think about name changes, and you know that this is going to stand the test of time for a long time. And so my question is, I think about my own schooling and thinking about the names that are on there, and even thinking just as a student, how much I didn't know about the names of the people that are on the buildings. And so I'm very curious as to how you all are going to plan to amplify what you've seen for generations, so that students who are coming in, it's not just text on a wall or on a plaque somewhere, it becomes a part of the classroom, it becomes what they learn as part of orientation, so that there's that extra sense of pride that they have in knowing who this man is and was in the future, much, much distant, distant future. So I'm just curious as to if you all are planning something or are planning regular conversations, bringing in alum. What we heard tonight was powerful, and I do think the students need to hear that for generations. So I'm actually curious how, how you all are engaging that.
Well, you know, the work a couple of years ago became a school, a seven to 12 school, right? And my first move was to put someone with the seven and eighth graders that really represent the heart of the Burke High School, you know, that could really begin to mentor them and help them grow into true scholars based on, you know, mentorship, other programs, knowing the history, you know, not only the community, but also of the school itself. So with that said also, I just want to say, I don't, I'm not, you know, leaving Jeremiah Burke and, you know, as the first, one of the first headmasters at that school. I'm not, I'm not taking any credit away from him. When I stepped into this job was to, my main goal was to begin changing the narrative about the school. And I think this is one way of doing it. And we, through mentorship, and we should be able to really use the children, their success in what they do, because we not only engage them within the building, they go out in the community. You know, they engage with, with members of our community, Dorchester and White. And one of the things that every child needs to present when they graduate from Jeremiah Burke High School is a capstone, you know, part of, and a topic in one of the capstones is about their community, the changes, right? So the research that they do needs to include, you know, this man, who he was, what he did, and why it's important for us to really have this, you know, change of the name that that's school community.
Can I just add a little bit to that? I think the beauty of all of this is that Dr. Holland is still alive. So, and I spoke earlier about the time that he spent with some students, and one, the first thing he did was he apologized to the students in saying, this, this conversation should have started with you. And even though he didn't have anything to do with this, this was some former alum that wanted to honor him, but he still apologized to students and promised students that, that it wouldn't be the last time they see him, right? So I think the fact that he's still here, and he can be present in the school and get into those students, and it's powerful and impactful that, because they can see him, they can touch him, and they can feel him. So I think that's how we could kind of really just integrate who he really is into the school in real time, right? And not talking about who he was, but talk about who he is.
I have less of a question, more of a comment. I think anyone who knows me knows, when I moved to Boston, I'm from Miami originally, and then from New York for 20 years, I had never been in a place with so many platitudes, and it like always made me uncomfortable, like sort of like big statements about things all the time, and they became empty. This is probably one of the few presentations I've had here that felt so full of life and hope and opportunity. I feel very lucky. I feel very lucky to have gotten to hear about his impact. Um, I think this is exciting. I also think to your question, it'll be exciting to think about how we support the legacy continuing in the lives of young people. Like, how does that become part of the day-to-day or the even just the experience in totality to really keep the legacy alive while he's with us? And because names live on after we're gone, when he's no longer with us. And then, of course, the technology piece as well, like how do we support that part of the name change in the infrastructure after your transition as well? But um, the presentation was fantastic. The speakers really helped define who he is. Um, how lucky is he to get to hear all of these things said about him? So what a blessing. Thank you for, for this tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration. And as I said, you know, I'm assuming and expecting that I'll come back to celebrate, you know, this positive change at the Jeremiah Burke right now and come in and find and be part of how we're gonna design and change that what's on the top. I saw him looking at it the other day, walking in front of the school. I didn't say anything. He was just looking at the name on top of the school, of the school building and say, he's looking, he's dreaming about it. But I didn't say anything to him, but we all do it right now. And uh, you know, that will be also my last contribution to that school community. See that, you know, there's a lot growing. There's a lot happening at the Burke. And that's what we need to continue to showcase so the public can really know that it's not only, you know, teaching and learning that's happening in there. There's a lot of love, you know, there's a lot of love and commitment on the behalf of the staff that are in there. And it's all because, you know, people like Albert Holland, that, you know, it's a lot of people that work with him, know him well, and will continue to. And I'm certain that this is not the last that we've seen of Albert Holland.
I know that we're, and rightly so, celebrating Dr. Holland, but I don't wanna let the moment go without acknowledging you, Mailcar. Uh, you know, I've had the chance to work with you, principal to principal, uh, and in other capacities and Mailcar's had to really lead through some really difficult situations. And it's because of your humanity, the way you connect with students, how proud you are of the Burke in our Cape Verdean community there. It's for all of those reasons that you too have your own legacy there. So I just don't want the moment to go. Uh, you deserve every moment of squeeze of retirement.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, for calling that out. You know, I'm sitting here chuckling. I'm hoping Dr. Holland is watching this at home on Zoom. And he is probably mortified, right? Because you never meet a more humble man than Dr. Al Holland. And the fact that people are singing his praises all night is probably driving him crazy. And I can hear him saying, come on, let's just get to the work. Let's get to it. But um, he, he deserves this. I've been doing this for a while as a school committee member and have worked all across this district. And there's probably about a dozen people in my head that when they speak, I shut up and I listen. Um, two of them are sitting right over here, by the way, that I call her the dean of the school committee because Ms. Alfreda Harris, or Coach Harris, is the longest-serving member of this appointed body for twenty years. I will not break your record, Ms. Harris. Um, but I still listen whenever you speak. And Dr. Carol Johnson, of course, we're honored that she's back with us tonight and doing it for Dr. Holland and but Dr. Holland is one of those people. And as he was referred to earlier tonight, he has been our firefighter, even after leaving the Burke. When we've had a problem with the district, we call Dr. Holland and he's the first to respond. And it's always, what can I do to help? Um, and to hear, as other members have said, the outpouring of people that he has impacted in his life as Coach Harris has, you know, over the years, we've heard many people refer to Ms. Harris as Coach Harris. It's great that we have these members of the community that impacted so many people and this is so appropriate. I do wanna make a couple more comments. One, I'm glad we talked about the Burke. As, as Mr. Silver knows, we had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to give out some scholarships that the three of us worked on together, Chair Robinson and Ms. Lima Barbosa and myself. And I have to tell you, when we talked to your three Burke students who were finalists from the Burke, one in particular said to us, don't believe what you read in the media. When I walk in the door of the Burke, I feel love and I'm part of a community. And that expression really struck with me. We had a teacher earlier tonight said, learning begins with love. And so to hear students say that's how they feel at the Burke, that's a community that, that people have. And I actually repeated that back to a reporter in, in our community who said to me, you're right, there's a special feeling at the Burke and it doesn't come out to enough of the city. Enough of the city doesn't know that. And Mr. Silver, you've had a lot to do with that. So like others, I look forward to attending the graduation tomorrow night, your last one as head of school, but congratulations for all you've done. Um, I just wanted to say two things. I share with my fellow members the interest in the technology piece. And I think it's incumbent upon us, if we're gonna name the school, if we're gonna, I shouldn't say if, name the school after Dr. Holland. The second piece of that, we owe it to Dr. Holland to make sure the resources are there and the work continues so that it is a great school of technology, right? That it, you can't attach someone's name to something and not live up to the full promise. So I think the district owes that to make sure that that promise is fulfilled and it's a great school of technology. And the other piece is, and you were addressing it, and um, as the head of the Alumni Association, you know, I, I caught what Ms. Lima Barbosa said and she said, well, you know, I'm a Burke person and I didn't know this person. So how do we, how do we connect the dots, right? Because we had this example years ago, well before my time, well before Ms. Harris's time, when this, when we changed, when we, this body changed Boston Tech to the O'Brien School. Well-named after former chair of this committee, John D. O'Brien, and perfectly deserving. But we had some alumni lose touch with the school because they said not, and then we changed build, they changed buildings. So we went back later to someone who were very successful alum and we asked them to support the school. They said, not my name, not my building. Right? So we need to make sure to be able to connect the dots, that people still respect. And I love that you said, I'll still wear my Burke gear. But this is, this is really important that we're naming it after Dr. Holland. And we need to make sure that all that buy-in is there, that people can connect the dots of, of why and how they can keep building and, and buying in to make it an, an even better school than it is. So I just, I applaud the effort and I'm glad to hear the thought process behind. You know, how do we make sure to connect the dots? How do we keep the leg, people understand why this is happening? And that it's not disrespect in any way, but it's moving the school forward. So those are my comments. Thank you for that.
I just wanna say thank you all for doing this. For any number of reasons, I did not know Dr. Holland until I became a member of this committee. And in my early years, it was more hearing, literally, there's a problem presenting Al Holland. There's another problem somewhere else, presenting Al Holland. And when I first met him, I realized that he was a gentle giant. Um, so respectful, always listening to all sides and coming to conclusions that were right for the students. That he really cared about, he cares about all of our students across the district. And, you know, you never know when you're going to see or hear from him, but it's always about what is right and what's needed for, you know, some group of students in the city. He's not territorial that he only goes to this school or another school. Um, I've encountered him in a variety of settings and have always been humbled by his presence but also listening carefully to his thoughts and his recommendations. And so, again, being, uh, be, uh, you know, a graduate of Boston Public Schools, I went to girls' Latin school, which doesn't exist in a building or in a name any longer and have struggled with many of the myalumps who have not been able to embrace Boston Latin Academy because it's coed, it's in a different building. Um, but feeling, you know, we're, we're, we're getting older, we're not gonna be here. But, and I don't want those young people to remember those crotchety older folk who couldn't get with the program. And I have many of my friends who graduated the Burke. You know, we've talked a lot about, and I've asked them, well, did you know who Burke was? Did you ever know who Burke was? You know, did you ever, well, no, it was a name. I said, well, guess what? Al Holland is real and alive and a member of our community. Um, and is someone that our young people need to feel happy with knowing that a person just like them, a member of this community who gave a lot and continues to give a lot is a place, a person that we have honored with the naming of the school. So, um, as I can say, on behalf of the committee, we look forward to taking action on this at our next meeting. And thank you all for your present, presentation, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you.
So before we go on to our last agenda item, I wanna just take a quick five-minute break so that we can regroup and allow our superintendent to go home. We're gonna come back.
No, it makes, it makes sense.
Thank you.
The Office of Opportunity Gaps works closely with the academics team or have worked with the academics team very closely on two racial equity planning tools. And we know where our focus needs to be. First, we began with improving principals capacity and knowledge of what equitable literacy is. And what it means for students and educators. Next, it was critical to build the academic infrastructure to support equitable literacy implementation. We did this by investing in materials, coaching and professional development. Because of this scaffolding, we have made remarkable progress. Just over ninety percent of our schools report using HQIM in ELA or English Language Arts. Approximately eighty-four percent in mathematics, just under eighty-seven percent in science. And nearly seventy-two percent of schools are using HQIM in all three subjects. But the data is also, I need to share as well stagnant for our multilingual learners and students with disabilities. We have much more work to do. In our classroom observations during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, for instance. We have seen disparity and access to HQIM. A few of these areas that we need to focus on, I'll give a couple of examples here. Is ensuring our multilingual learners have better access to linguistic supports. And ensuring our students with disabilities, particularly in sub separate classrooms, have better access to grade level content. Providing the professional development. Will be our focus in school year twenty-four, twenty-five. Tonight, Leslie Miller, Chief of Teaching and Learning will give a presentation on the district's work and progress so far. Leslie will be joined by Dr. Yasmin Gay, Assistant Superintendent in the Office of Opportunity Gaps. Quite the dynamic duo. Who will explain how equitable literacy meets the goals of opportunity and achievement gap policy. And we're also very pleased to have Carla Jenkins join us from the Higginson School. Who can speak to the implementation of equitable literacy, particularly in her case in the early grades. I will now turn the time over to Chief Miller and Dr. Gay.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Chen. Thank you, School Committee, for having us and for your time. I'm very pleased to be here to present on equitable literacy. I'm pleased to present with Dr. Yasmin Gay and Donna Lashes from the Opportunity Gaps Office. And I just wanted to take a moment to shout out others in teaching and learning. The process of implementing equitable literacy is a very complex and heavy lift. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank members of the Teaching and Learning Department. It's a true team effort. In the audience this evening is Brooke Childs. She's the Executive Director of Pre-K to Two Equitable Literacy. Ms. Doctor, excuse me, Keisha Valdez, who is the Executive Director of Grades Three Through Six Equitable Literacy. And Danielle Ali, who is the Executive Director of Equitable Literacy, Grades Seven Through Twelve. They do a lot of this heavy lifting. And beyond their support, this is a full teaching and learning and cross. Functional team effort across multiple departments. Also, the Executive Director of STEM, Beth Meluski, is hugely important in this work. And the Executive Director of Humanities, Dr. Angela Headley Mitchell, plays a critical role. Along with Christine Cronin, who's the Executive Director of Professional Development. This is a multidisciplinary approach to the work. And so this work involves the arts, it involves school libraries, it involves world languages. So I want to shout out Tony Beatrice Liswero Phipps. And all of my colleagues who Julie Calderon from World Language who also support this work. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief Miller.
Okay. I threw you off, sorry. So today I just wanted to break down what we will be talking about in terms of equitable literacy. We divided our presentation into three components. First, talking about what is equitable literacy, which fundamentally is the intersection of evidence-based best practices. And culturally responsive teaching, but we'll get a little bit more in depth into what it is. Also, we'd like to talk about what are the ways that we progress monitor our implementation? And really think about the efficacy of the work that we're doing as we think about student achievement data. And then lastly, what are the supports, the professional learning that we provide to educators as they're implementing, again, this very complex work? So I won't talk about this much, but Megan suggested, she said, you're going to need that acronym sheet for this one. So we just put this in there for reference and we're going to try to not use many acronyms and say the full terms. But at any point, we need to define something, please don't hesitate to let us know. So what is equitable literacy? So it's all the things you see on this screen. Primarily and first and foremost, it is access for all children to grade level, standards-aligned instruction. So MCAS certainly isn't the end-all be-all, but it certainly is a measure of our children's effectiveness. And their growth and their proficiency academically. And our children don't have a chance if we don't put before them the learning that they're going to be assessed on. So that's one reason that equitable literacy is critically important. We have to give children access to the things we expect them to learn and that we're going to assess them on. If we don't do that, we're starting, already starting at a deficit. So at its core, equitable literacy is grade level, instruction, standards aligned, that again is culturally responsive. You'll see that there are five practices that we think about as we implement equitable literacy. The first is intentional knowledge and language activation across disciplines. So many times the term equitable literacy throws people off and they think this is all about reading and writing. This is about math instruction, science instruction, the way that children access the arts. This again is cross-disciplinary. Daily work with enabling texts. Again, these are texts where children see themselves in the text. And I've said this many times, I took this from Dr. Beverly Daniel Tatum. It's not only children seeing themselves in the text, they need to see themselves looking good. See themselves being successful, seeing themselves doing things that matter to them, all very important. Additionally, additionally, it's explicit research and text-based disciplinary writing. It's explicit and systematic instruction in the function of language, syntax, morphology, phonemic awareness, phonology. And then also daily work with complex texts. And I want to talk a little bit about the way that these things intersect. So we've been doing some work with Dr. Zaretta Hammond. She has really been talking to us about ways that we need to continue to improve the equitable literacy model. And we're really focused on that continuous improvement. So one example that I like to reference is, let's think about complex texts. So we want to make sure that our children have access to complex texts that are grade level appropriate. That is critical and HQIM, high-quality instructional materials, is one of the things that allows us to do that. We've adopted high-quality instructional materials that we know contain complex texts. If you have a student and you're giving them access to the complex text. But they still are in need of learning of particular skills so they can actually access that text. It's those skills in between that are really critical and that is also part of equitable literacy. So one of the examples I can give, and sometimes we do see this in our classrooms. When we put complex texts in front of children. But we don't support them with the skills that they need to really know and hone in on and be proficient in in order to understand those complex texts. What happens is we start to overscuffle. And we start to give them too much information. And then we take the thinking from them and we start doing the thinking for them.
Some of them said comments like, "I came in thinking this was a really good REPT, and it was gonna get approved, right? Now with this lens that I have, it can't get approved." They gotta go back to the drawing board, and they've got to really think about, what are the things that we need to add to this that will make it stronger for our marginalized populations, right? And so they learn through this process, there were some things that, concepts that were missing. There wasn't, in some places, there wasn't culturally-affirming texts that kids could use. And there were texts that are like historical texts that we have used in Boston Public Schools and in other districts that necessarily didn't put our students' culture and ethnicity in a positive light. And we had to talk to folks about, how do you build those content narratives so that we're not continually doing additional harm to students? And so it was such a wonderful process that we use data to identify where the gaps were and where the problem of practice needed to be. And we asked them to really say, how are you going to justify this alternative curriculum? How are you going to go back and review it to ensure in a year that it is going to make an impact for our marginalized populations? And then the engagement process, which is a huge piece of the racial equity planning tool. We have to get those marginalized voices to the table to be able to have their voices around what will be best for their children so that they can be critical consumers in this process. And so it's very important to have the parents and students for the high school, and even sometimes middle school, at that table having these same conversations. What we found in through this REPT process was that the engagement process existed of like maybe a one-time meeting with families or one-time meeting with students. It wasn't an ongoing process to really get families and students and some staff invested into this process so that when they came to the implementation stage, that everybody would have ownership and buy in. And so we really talked to them about, how do you then build that engagement process to be more ongoing and be able to then shift the practices that need to happen at your school?
So I just would like to level set just quickly, just to give a definition of CLSP, culturally-linguistic sustaining practices, and why it is a major lever of equity in equitable literacy. Well, it's cognitive science. Learning through our racial, cultural, and linguistic lens is our human right. We see the world through our lenses. When students are learning in spaces that do not connect to their lived experiences, it creates barriers in their cognitive pathways, and it affects performance. Donna, again, will share three aspects of CLSP that supports student learning with the district's implementation of high-quality instructional materials.
So one of the most important pieces that we have looked at is we've done a lot of work in the Boston Public Schools, in the CLSP continuum on competency one. And that's really having staff look at their own biases and how that reflects on students and the work and their expectations for students, and how they go along a reflective journey to be more critical conscious and make equitable decisions. And the district has done a lot of work in that area. And when I came on as the Equity Strategy Manager, I said, "We need to move to competency two," where we're talking about building relationships that are sustainable for children, where we're talking about digging deeper into students' cultural learning and how that becomes an access point for them into the curriculum. And so the work that we're doing is, we have a team of folks that are delving deep into the funds of knowledge of students and families, and we're building funds of knowledge inventories that are aligned to the curriculum so that teachers will now have a toolkit of how I can bring families or students' background knowledge, lived experience, and their cultural learning into that curriculum so that they have access points, which is really key. We also are addressing those social barriers that exist and that come up. Teachers not knowing and understanding their children, not knowing their cultural scripts, their cultural norms, and how that impacts how they engage in their learning process. And so we're working on some of that. And we're also mitigating the effects of the negative racial, cultural, and linguistic stereotypes that are on student performance. And how do we help teachers to make those equitable decisions around how do they change their practice to meet the needs of all students in their classroom?
So Donna just shared about CLSP, which is one aspect of equitable literacy. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on high-quality instructional materials, but what you see is what HQIM provides for our students, along with some of the research around the importance of HQIM. One of the things I just want to shout out is that the evidence suggests that the choice of instructional materials and using high-quality instructional materials can have as large of an impact on a student, positive impact on a student, as teacher quality. So this is something that is critical to have in place. Another aspect of equitable literacy are multi-tiered systems of support. And really, this is just a way to make sure that we have the right interventions, we have the right evidence-based practices. A great example is, we have a D cap, the District Accommodation Plan, where we list out what are the various interventions. Well, what is the Tier One curriculum? What are the interventions at Tier Two and interventions at Tier Three? And we review that annually. And one of the things we learned that, we know that some schools are using certain interventions that weren't on the D cap. And so we went back, and when we see a large amount of schools using something, that must mean there's something that is successful with them. And so we went back and updated the D cap to reflect some of the things that we see our schools using that maybe weren't district-supported so that we could better understand how these things are helping children and make sure that we can provide access for children, which sometimes comes in the form of just doing procurement for the schools, getting the contract in place for the schools, so it's something that we can take off of the school leader's plates. One of the things that I want to shout out is, we have MTSS coordinators in every single Boston Public School. These are stipended positions. And just a few things that these MTSS coordinators support with are, they assist teachers and instructional staff in understanding MTSS. They support educators in communicating with families regarding student, excuse me, student progress and provide strategies that families can use at home. They advocate for a schedule that allows for various tiered supports to happen. So as an example, if we have a young person that, let's say, is struggling with literacy, and we want to give them extra literacy support, you can't pull them out of reading to give them extra literacy support. They need to get the double dose. They need to have reading with their peers in Tier One, and then we need to find another time that they can receive either the Tier Two or the Tier Three. That makes for a very, very complex schedule. And so these are some things that we're really needing to support our schools with. MTSS coordinators also provide capacity at ILT meetings, Common Planning Time, Student Support Meetings. And they also support the documentation of interventions. So they'll attend student support meetings. And if you're looking at a particular student, they'll make sure that whatever interventions that student is getting, that they're being logged in panorama, that the team's coming back to them in the specified period to see, is the intervention working? If it's working, we can either cease it, or we can continue if they need continued support. Or if it's not working, we need to switch up and do something that is working. Last, I'll just say, another core component of this work are interventionists. Some schools do pay for interventionists with their own school-based funding, but we also have 24 centrally-funded interventionists that are dispatched to particular schools. And I have to say, as I've been visiting schools, I was at the Homes a couple of weeks ago. They said great things about the interventionists that are providing student-facing supports, but also a lot of what they're doing is modeling what can happen in other classrooms, so helping to build the capacity within schools. That's okay. This, I'll go by really quickly. I think this is important. I shared this with school leaders on a school leader call. This is just a slide that shows our focus is not changing. We are sticking with equitable literacy. It's not equitable literacy two years ago, and now we're going to do something else. It's equitable literacy. But what we do do is each year, we build upon what we've learned. So you'll see last year, the focus was really on garnering the high-quality instructional materials. This year, it's using those, the high-quality instructional materials and focusing on really, really strong Tier One, what all of our kiddos get. And then next year, the expectations that we've already communicated to our school leaders is that we're going to continue with equitable literacy, we're continuing with Tier One, but now we're thinking about universal design for learning and specially-designed instruction to make sure that our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities can access grade-level texts and just grade-level work. And so I'm really excited when Carla presents, that's a big focus of what she's going to talk about. And also just making sure we've got the right Tier Two and Tier Three interventions in place. So this is just a slide that I wanted to add, just to remind people of what equitable literacy looks like in practice. Again, a lot of people think of, because of equitable literacy, that it is always ELA. It's math, it's science, it's social studies. What you see here is an example of a complex text in Grade Seven that's been taken from illustrative math. And then also what you see here are some decodables that go along with our focus curriculum. And what I just love about these, and when I'm in schools and I see the children reading them, it just, it's so heartwarming because they really do see themselves in the text. They'll say, "Oh, my gosh, I was just at the Arboretum," or "Oh, my gosh, I was just at the zoo." And so these are decodables that we've created in-house. And you'll see with students that look like many of the students that are in front of us, and then Yusef at the Arboretum, a place that is local, where a lot of our students are able to visit. All right, next, how are we measuring our success and our effectiveness? So this information is not new to this committee, it's not new to our school leaders. These are our universal expectations. This is a outlined set of expectations for all schools. What you'll see on the left are our priorities that are in every school's quality school plan. And so equitable literacy is that first priority that we expect every school to have a plan for and address yearly and update those goals based on student needs and teacher needs as well. Let's see. So the, this evidence is sectioned into outcome evidence and practice evidence. What are the indicators that we're monitoring and we're looking for progress towards? And then our practice evidence are the actions that we believe, if taken by school, is going to demonstrate success for our students. So this is a slide that I'm proud of. It is around the use of HQIM by subject area. And so we have made huge strides just in the last year. One of the things that I do want to address head-on is, many people will say, "Well, why aren't we at 100% for all of these?" This was something that I was talking to city councilors about at the budget hearing. And there's a couple of reasons for it. It seems like it would be easy and just an act of just procuring the materials, but it, again, is much more complex than that. So one of the things is that for many of our schools, they didn't have any HQIM in place across any of the subject areas. It is really only feasible to implement one content area at a time. And really, a content area can take two or more years to implement. Now, we don't wait that long, but it is highly unlikely that we're going to see success if a school is trying to implement, let's say, math and ELA at the same time. That's just way, way too difficult, especially for our three-through-five teachers that teach more than one content area. So that is why you'll see that some of these aren't at 100%. For instance, I was at the Blackstone not too long ago. They're in the midst of implementing IM, but they're also wanting to really, I'm sorry, illustrative math. They're also really wanting to reinvigorate the Expeditionary Learning Curriculum and ELA. It's tough to do those things at the same time. So, and they actually were doing those things at the same time. And so we've been having some conversations about, like, let's slow down, and let's take one content area at a time, one content area at a time, and go really deep and do well with that. Another reason it's not at 100%, is change is tough. Change is art. There's a science to it. It's not coming in and saying, "We mandate you do this curriculum." That's a surefire way, surefire way for this not to go well. And so we engage in a lot of conversations. We share a lot of examples of what the curriculum looks like, of what it looks like in action. We connect schools so that one school that's looking to adopt can talk to another school that's a new adopter and talk about what worked, what didn't work. Let's see. There's also some schools that have special populations. One that I'd like to shout out is BDEA. They've actually created their own curriculum. They've been working with TNTP, which is a highly reputable organization. And so they've been doing a lot of work on their own, and so that's not shown here. Do I think that the materials that they're using are quality? I certainly do. But when we say high-quality instructional materials, we are talking about materials that have been rated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as being high-quality. With that being said, I know the question is going to come up about the focus curriculum. So the focus curriculum has yet to be rated by DESI. And I just want to talk a little bit about why. DESI will not rate curriculums that encompass other curriculums. So our focus curriculum contains both HEGERTY and foundations, both which are high-quality instructional materials. But because focus contains those two curriculum, they won't rate it. And so what we've done is, we actually just completed a RFP, and we just got, I got to ask Brooke, Student Achievement Partners? Okay. Student Achievement Partners is going to be evaluating the focus curriculum so that we can surely say that it's high-quality instructional materials. I know, I know in my heart that it is. One, because of the things that I showed you around the decodables, showing our students in a local context, that makes it high-quality. But also, again, it encompasses two other curricula that have already been deemed high-quality instructional materials. I know you guys have a lot ahead of you, so I don't want to take too much time. Quickly, the Equitable Literacy walkthrough tool. This is how we collect data on our implementation of our equitable literacy practices. The indicators in the Equitable Literacy Observation Tool are evidenced in our equitable literacy look-for's. They come from the WIDA standards, as well as the CRIOP, Culturally Responsive Instruction Observation Protocol. What you'll see here, that again, I'm really proud of, is that as a district, we're using one tool. We're all aligned around something. This year alone, we've done 2,415 walkthroughs using this tool, which I think is absolutely incredible. And one of the things I'd like to highlight is just the fact that we've seen 80.54% content alignment, which I do think has to do with the use of increased high-quality instructional materials. If those materials are standards and grade-level aligned, that's what we should see in classrooms. We should see grade-level materials. So on 80% of these 2,415 walkthroughs, we saw grade-level appropriate and aligned work. So again, just one of the positives is, you'll see on the left side is our alignment to grade-level standards. And then on the right side, you'll see how the use of HQIM really ensures that we, the, when HQIM is in use, we see higher rates of equitable literacy practices. So again, where HQIM is used, we see higher grade-level standards in classroom. Where HQIM is used, we see more of the students doing the heavy lifting in Where HQIM is used, we see more of the students doing the heavy lifting in the classroom. Uh, in our K to two classrooms, we see more students getting access to complex text when they're using the focus curriculum and so on. Um, I pointed this out at the student opportunity of, of, it's not index, student opportunity. At, at the SOA presentation, I don't know why I forget what that is. Uh, at the SOA presentation, there are some parts of this data that are incredibly sobering, um, specifically catered to writing. Um, but this is something that we're thinking a lot about. Um, and quite frankly, writing is a place where we can really use uh, a push, a little bit of an overhaul just across the board. So that's something that we're thinking about. And one of the first things we're doing to address that is looking at the HQIM. And pulling out in the HQIM where writing um, is addressed, so we can start to highlight that for teachers. So we don't want to get a totally new writing curriculum and add one more thing, but where is it already being addressed in the curriculums that we're using? Oh, one thing I did just want to say on the last slide. Um, one of the things that this data uh, really begs of us is that while we have much more HQIM in place. The problem of practice is around implementation. Um, because these, we really should see a much higher level of these EQL practices. But again, it goes to kind of the denseness of these curriculums, the complexity of these curriculums. Once our teachers really get a strong handle on it, we think that we'll see these numbers really skyrocket. But tha, that's a, a really tricky process, and so I'll talk a little bit more about professional learning in a moment. Um, I won't spend a lot of time here, but this is uh, walkthrough data from April. Um, let me make sure, am I, it's right here, okay? So I'm actually gonna go here first. So uh, just to show, uh, we talked about grade level content, that's on the left. That data's pretty much stayed the same. But if you look at our observations in, in December, um, you'll see heavy lifting was only at twenty seven percent. Um, seventy-three percent of our classrooms were not uh, allowing students to do the heavy lift. So the cognitive demand was carried by the teachers and not the children. But. When we fast forward to April, the evidence of heavy lifting in classrooms moved to sixty-five percent. So I think one of the things that that demonstrates is as teachers have more time with the curriculum, as they get more professional learning. Those equitable literacy practices get better and stronger, um, but it takes time. Um, I'd now like to turn it over to uh, Carla Jenkins. Who is the amazing principal of the Henry L. Higginson Inclusion School, lovingly called the Baby Hig. Um, and I asked her to present because uh, she is in a full inclusion school. And she makes no excuses for anyone, and, and her staff knows it. Um, the, the expectation is, this is the expectation and students need to meet it. And so there are high expectations throughout her building. She also has an amazing relationship uh, with Brooke, um, who uh, does some of the coaching in her building. She also has a coach, but prior to that, Coach Brooke was there. And the way that they work together in support of students uh, is what we would hope for every school. Um, so I just wanted to give her some time to share.
Good evening, school committee members. It's a pleasure to see you all again, um, to meet some and to say hi to others. Um, again, Carla Jenkins, proud, very, very proud principal of the Baby Hig as we're fondly known, right up the street in Roxbury. Um, and I would say the opportunity to tell our story is great. I'd like to thank, are they still back there? Are they still back there? Those two wonderful people behind me are members of my team, my second grade inclusion teacher, Ms. Santos. And our uh, instructional coach and K two teacher, Ms. Dunbar. Um, and I thank them both for joining us to really celebrate the work that we are doing here at the Higginson School. Um, when I started at the Higginson four years ago, we were entering a global pandemic. And so much of the work that needed to be done had to be done layered upon um, really having a, a conversation. Around what were the needs of our students? What I would say though is oftentimes in this conversation, we would say what happened during the pandemic was um, a reality of the pandemic. What I would say to you is the reality is the data of the Higginson pre-existed our pandemic. And we had a um, we had a situation on our hands. It was not a judgment of um, where we were, who was in the building, who our kids were. But we did have a call to ensure that we were holding the. Thank you, the bar. Um, they're going to have to be interactive if they're going to come and visit with me. And that we are holding to four critical pieces of the work that I require every day, which are. Joy. Liberation. Genius. I'm gonna let him off, it's late. So joy, learning, liberation and genius are what we do at the Higginson. It is the expectation, it is the requirement, it is not, it is not. Um, our opportunity to not do what's best for kids. So the bar is standards are above standards at the Higginson. How we get kids to and through the bar is the work that we do every day. So as Chief Miller was describing, that a lot of the lift around the work around equitable literacy. And giving access to high quality instructional materials really sits in the classroom. And often we don't get to the ground to really understand the application. It has taken us approximately four years to get to where we are with this data, and we're still growing. And I'm type A, so they often have to come and tell me how great we're doing because we gotta do better, okay? And that's just, that's the bar, right? Because in Roxbury, ninety-nine point, ninety-eight point nine percent of the students that I serve, that we serve are black and brown. They look like me, they come from an experience as a migrant community, they're predominantly Latinx. With the predominant language being Spanish speakers, with a growing uh, population of Haitian families. Who are actually Spanish speaking and who also speak Haitian Creole. We are also what we often call in our community, an inverted triangle. The level of need in our community is extremely high, but that is not our story. That is not our narrative, and that is not the story we will tell around the hundred and sixty-eight students I serve every day. While our students may come from backgrounds where the data tells you that we have an extremely high population of need. An extremely high population of families who are low income, currently approximately thirty families of that hundred and sixty-eight. Who are experiencing homelessness or um, housing insecurity. The reality is they are learning, they have joy. We are required to liberate their genius every day. And the way we do that is by making sure that every student in the Higginson has access to what they need to be successful. So yes, I do make demands of the district. I do require us to ensure that the resources, human resources. As well as, well as the physical resources are present in our buildings every day in order to support our learning in our community. We're a community that has been, has been full inclusion. Um, and also we have an ABA strand for students with autism. It is an amazing experience and one that I gladly am proud to say that I sit as a lead learner with my team. To ensure that we do what's right for our kiddos. And so with that, what's hard about this work is how do you ensure that kids get what they need in their hands? Well, you've got to make sure that you set the bar. So some of it was, when I got to the Higginson, half the building was using high quality instructional materials and half the building wasn't. And so our data was showing us that when kids were leaving the Higginson, unfortunately, they were not ready to read. They could not read or didn't, they did not have the skills to read. And so we had to really go back to the drawing board. We had to ensure that we got access. When you look on that equitable literacy wheel, we focused in on foundational skills. What are the skills that students need every day in order for them to be successful in life? And first, they need to learn how to read, right? So counting, knowing their sounds, knowing their letters, being able to decode so that they can read. Understanding, the adults understanding the science of reading. And providing them with a professional learning opportunities that deepen their knowledge and deepen their skill. Then it also requires us to ensure that we're not just talking about it, we're being about the work. And so part of that is also ensuring that my team is able to not just have the books in hand that look like the kids. That sounds really great, I love CLSP, but the reality of that is. If kids only have the books but cannot actually be critical consumers of the texts themselves. Yes, they can be critical consumers at three, they can be critical consumers when they're neurodivergent. Yes, they can be critical consumers because they have language as a superpower. And so as we ensure that they're critical consumers of texts, literacy texts, as well as mathematical texts, scientific texts. Then we ensure that they are doing the work, the work and doing the lift every day. My team will tell you, I need the kids to be able to tell me what they're learning every day. How was your day? I don't want to hear good, good, sounds great, but what did you learn today? Okay? And that's the assurance that we want to give every child at the Higginson. Some of the work that we're really proud of is the work that we're doing around inclusion, which also means our students in our sub separate strand are not sub separate. Right, but they have this opportunity to really take part in par, partial inclusion opportunities every day. During critical components of the instructional day. So for us at the Higginson, we have moved seven students in four years out of the uh, most restrictive environment into the least restrictive environment. That is not a small feat. And it takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of commitment, and has, actually takes a mindset to believe that kids deserve to learn in the least restrictive and most inclusive environment. In addition, for those students who need maybe a little bit more, we ensure that there are partial inclusion opportunities. And so we have kiddos every day, forty-seven percent of our population currently, who go into the inclusion classrooms and learn with their peers. It's really exciting to see, if you do the walkthrough, staff always says, how come your inclusion specialist, I've seen him three times today? Exactly, that's why he's there. So that we have these opportunities for inclusive practices to be, be lived out loud. The same thing goes for our partial inclusion strand specialists who bring students to classrooms and small group instruction every day. What I would say about our data is we are still working, we are still growing. What we learned in my work with Brooke and the early childhood team two years ago. As we were grounding in our practices as the adults around the foundational skills was. We really needed to learn into the understanding and the implementation of curriculum um, with integrity. Um, and in doing so, we also had to be sure that we were data consumers. So I'm a data junkie, so if you're going to come to me about the problem, you better have some data to back it up, right? And uh, and, and solutions to the challenge. We can talk about the problem or we can be about the solution to the challenge. And so what we've learned to do in the work that Ms. Dunbar does with our, during our common planning time with teachers. Is that the reality is some of our professional learning had to shift after we took our map assessments. We also used the core phonics assessment as a way to progress monitor our kids every six to eight weeks. So we really are able to drill in and understand what are the specific skills they need. And as uh, Leslie shared earlier, the other thing is we have to do this thing um, smart, right? And part of that was understanding that while I was not in love with our math curriculum, it's no surprise to anyone, I'm not a fan. Um, I couldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater. So I couldn't do math and literacy all in the same year while managing a global pandemic. I'd already shook, shaken the world of my, half my building, right? And so this year, we took on the task that was presented by the district and shifted our math curriculum. And now we know the tools to do that. And it's rough, right, Ms. Santos? Okay, all right, I could feel her behind me, it's rough. You know, we've got to figure out the pacing of math for second graders and what do we need to do to ensure they can access this high quality material? However, we're doing the best we can and we are learners, we're lead learners in this practice. And so, um, I would say the last piece of our work was we um, as a school community. That has a high percentage of multilingual learners and multilingual learners with disabilities, we had a challenge on our hands. And we had to ensure we were really servicing those kids as quick, as best as we can. And so the way that we're doing that is we actually advocated to the district, um, to Dr. Chen. Through our inclusion planning team process, to really rethink the idea of SEI and inclusion in schools. And the reality was that in my humble opinion, we were doing language sub separate programs and that wasn't working for my children. And so to be able to shift those practices have made it an impressive difference in our scores and how kids are learning today. I know, I spoke a lot. I'm passionate about this because at the, the reality is these kids look like me. They've lived experiences like mine and my moral imperative is grounded in this. My mom didn't have the option to go for me to have a public school education because we were not investing in public education in the same way. In my, while I was growing up in New York, so she had to pay for my education. And my goal is, as long as I am called to this work, that we will always present students and their families with the highest quality education that they need. And uh, that is the true anti racist and culturally responsive practice that we are responsible to do here. As um, the stakeholders in Boston Public Schools.
I know that we are running out of time, but I want to maintain the, the rhythm of impact. I'm always excited to share impact. Um, uh, it's great to hear about the work of the implementation of high quality materials. Um, I'm always excited to hear Cartla had the privilege of working with her in Baltimore City Schools. So uh, just really proud to work alongside her here in Boston. Um, but what you're hearing is the impact of opportunity. Where all students have access to high quality instructional materials. But it's also coupled with that entry of cultural linguistic sustaining practices. Our students cannot be critical consumers of instruction if they do not have that entry, that cognitive and social emotional entry. Uh, addressing their identity and who they are, seeing themselves in the learning space is actually the underbelly of learning. It's not technically the, it's, it's not the technicality of curriculum and instruction that improves academics. It's actually the opportunity and exposure. So that you can take what you have in the learning space and grow from uh, what you have. So quickly, I just want to, this is the first time in opportunity gaps history and BPS history. That we share impact of CLSP, the first time. So I will let Donna share about the work that's happening in regions.
This has been really a powerful process with the, working in regions and working with the regional liaisons. Um, and really building people's critical consciousness around culturally linguistic sustaining practices. Um, and so part of what we have done is we've done environmental walkthroughs to go into our schools and say, where do we see students' identity? Where is it showing up? Is it showing up in the walls? Is it showing up in the work? Is it showing up in the books? Is it showing up um, in, in the interaction between um, teachers and students? Um, and then we give this rich feedback to the school with some recommendations of how do you shift some of those practices? Um, we also look at um, we do observational walkthroughs that are based off of the ten dimensions of belonging. Because that's a huge piece of um, competency too, in the CLSP continuum. And um, what we have done is gone in and worked with schools particularly on that. And we've, so we went into a second grade class at the Greenwood School that is a dual language school, right? The predominant um, population of students that are there are Puerto Rican. They were doing an activity, a, a task around the American frog. And we watched the engagement of the teacher and the students. And they looked very perplexed, what's the American frog? Who is this, right? What is this about, right? They're asking each other questions and people all have the answers, the teachers running around to each group, trying to work with them. And so we wrote a lot of it down and then we debriefed afterwards and we said, we're going to tell you what a missing opportunity was. Because usually we say, you didn't do this right, or you did that very well. We said, you had a missing opportunity and we want you to go back. We said, you had a missing opportunity and we want you to go back and reteach that. And we said to them, you have mostly children who are from Puerto Rico. Why did you not introduce the Koki to them? That's their background knowledge. That's their cultural learning. If they could take that and attach what they already know with that to learning the new content around the American frog, you would see a shift. We went back the next day to that same classroom. We had met with the teacher and outlined a plan for her lesson. And we went back into that classroom and she begun to teach it. The kids, you could see in it, the light went on. Oh, 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 look at the positive, the, the feet are different. Look at that. Well, the texture is different. The color is different. And they were able to do the activity with their own knowledge of what the Koki was and what was different with the American frog. Very powerful opportunity that took place there. We also did it at the Ellis School, um, where the teacher was working on facilitate, helping students to facilitate their own learning from their cultural knowledge. And so we had a, a, a white student with a student from Jamaica and they were studying about the waterfalls, right? And so the white student was talking about the Niagara Falls and how dangerous it was and she didn't think. The question was, can you walk on these falls, right? And she said, you can't walk, that's too dangerous. They go over to the ballot. I don't know how they survive, right? And, and the Jamaican girl was a brand new student to the classroom. She didn't feel like she fitted in. She didn't have that sense of belonging and she didn't know how to have that connection. And she actually said to the teacher, I don't want to go work with, I don't know her. I don't want, can I go with my friend? And the teacher said, no, because you're the teacher today. I want you to go and teach her about who you are, where you come from and about the waterfall, right? And she went over and she let the, the little white girl talk about it and she learned from her and then she said, well, we walk from the falls. We walk on the Dundee Falls. And actually we're going back, we're bringing my little brother because we have a tradition in our family where we take them under the water and bless them under the water. And there was this great conversation about it. Um, and then they presented to the rest of the class. You could see the difference in the behavior of that child and the connection she made to her learning. And now she felt like she was connected to the classrooms. So we, we have seen in our climate data that, um, in grades three to five, in grades three to five, twelve out of our thirteen schools in region three have made a, a increase, right? We also have seen, um, in the climate game for sense of belonging, um, in the, um, six to eight grades, two out of three schools made an increase. We also see that in chronic absenteeism, that we have decreased chronic absenteeism in all of our schools in region three. This year we had the opportunity to work with the wellness group. And part of the wellness summit, we were able to recognize the Greenwood and Ellis for the work that they have done around, um, cultural competency. And the shifts that they have made in their school, in the teaching practices and in the professional development that has happened for students. This is the first of the kind that we have seen in a long time in BPS.
Thank you. Um, I won't spend much time on this. I'll let you peruse this, but this is just, uh, our work plan, our streams of work as well as our, uh, benchmarks that we're looking to hit, uh, in the upcoming years. And quickly, how are we supporting educators with implementation? This is really the crux of our work. This is critically important. And so I, I, I know you guys are on the clock and I know you've got sixteen speakers for public comments, so I'm going to get through this quickly. Um, I want to talk about an initiative, uh, that we're implementing next year where we are going to use twelve of the thirty, twelve of the thirty hours of contractual professional learning that schools have, um, to engage teachers, uh, in professional learning that starts with high quality instructional materials, but really hones in on, uh, when you have HQIM, as Carla talked about, when you have young learners in front of you that have different needs. Let's say you have a child that has dyslexia. How do you help that student to access that curriculum? Where are the places in the curriculum that are written access points for students with disabilities and students that are multilingual learners? One of the things that's really different about this professional learning is that we're not asking teachers to, uh, go to OG's professional learning on CLSP and then come to teaching and learnings PD on, uh, HQIM and then go to the office of multilingual learners about the WIDA standards. Um, we are all collaborating, all the folks you see to give one stop shop. The PD contains all of those things. Um, and it's been a heavy lift having everyone collaborate around this, but it's working and it's looking really, really good. So we're really, uh, excited about implementation, um, starting in the summer. But here's just some of the information about that professional learning. Um, and one of the other pieces that's really critical is that, um, as people are engaging in this, teachers will come together from different schools so that they can share their practices. But then also coaches can then support that learning with job embedded PD at the school site. So it's like the, the, the professional learning just multiplies, um, as we move forward. Um, I won't spend a lot of time on this. I talked about a lot of this. Uh, what's on the wheel are a lot of the competencies that we're addressing. Um, you'll also see very specifically what the competencies are. It's outlined in the appendix. Um, and the only other thing I'll say about this that I think is really important is that we base the competencies on, one, the telescope, uh, network does a fall needs assessment. We use that data. And then if you all will remember, we had the four foundational inclusive courses. We got feedback from six thousand one hundred and eighteen teachers. And that, we use that feedback to help inform what this professional learning looks like. Lastly, um, the regional model, the districts invested a ton of resources into the regional model. These are the various, uh, uh, supports. And so with the regional model, we're always striving for continuous improvement, so making mid course corrections. So at first everyone was a regional liaison. We found out pretty quickly, not everybody can be a regional liaison. If there's only five program directors in ELA, they can't service a hundred and twenty schools in the same way. So then they became, um, differentiated supports. Um, we also have other, uh, roles that are more centralized supports. Like our school library team is really made up of two, two directors, a director and assistant director. So they're centralized supports because they're supporting the district in their entirety. And then lastly, um, this just is a chart that shows the various regional supports and the ways that they, uh, support equitable literacy so that you can see the types of, uh, support, professional learning that is, uh, there for our, our educators. And one of the new ones that we're adding is the manager of equity strategy.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all so much. And if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for this wonderful presentation. And now we'll put it up to committee members for questions.
I'll just go on, I'll just say thank you, um, for this. I do have, uh, quite a few questions, so I will just, in the interest of time, I will reserve my questions and make sure I get them to y'all separately.
Okay, not a problem.
No question for me.
I thought you were going to ask a question about HQIM. You know what? If you have one, we can connect offline. I was, I was getting ready for you.
I'm going to ask my questions. We're here.
Point it if you didn't.
One, thank you for this and I appreciate it. And in the spirit of levity, you guys are also like the good glasses brigade. I'm trying to join the crew, but that was.
Bobby Parker.
See, I see you. That was really helpful to get that lens sort of structurally. I love a walkthrough. I love content alignment. I love fidelity. I love all the improvements in culture and climate. But I also like outcomes, student focused outcomes. And, um, you know, like, I don't know, I'm thinking about like the NAEP scores and it's seventy percent of Boston public school students do not read on grade level. Like that is a crisis and we don't talk about student outcomes here enough if it is rare. Um, so I am just sort of curious, seventy percent, I think we just have to like hold that as that is our truth. So I guess I'm curious, and I'm thinking about this two ways. I know the work takes time to show outcomes, so I want to honor that. But you also talk about measuring discrete skills. And so I don't know if there is a way, and this may not be rolling off the top of your head, but where, how are we measuring, where are we seeing outcomes? Is there a threshold of, uh, the implementation of high quality instructional materials where we're starting to see greater gains? What's the data there? And then also are there discrete skills that we're seeing greater growth in, in particular grades that we think will lead to further outcomes? Whenever this happens again, but also in a follow up. That's the information that I think is really important for us as a body and share. Like, that's what I want to ground every conversation in, like we, everything has to go back to like, and even if it's not good news. And I know sometimes folks like to come here and just be like, we'll give you all the good news. Like even if it's not good news, like what is the truth behind the outcomes? So I don't know if there's anything you want to share, even if it's noticings there in a grade band. Um, I will also say my son is six and has those decodables and we enjoy them at home. We read them at bed.
Good, that's awesome.
So, but yeah, anything on the outcomes would be helpful for me.
Sure. So what I can say is one of the things that's most high leverage we're finding are the foundational literacy skills. That's a place where we have to hone in. Um, and we see a lot of the greatest growth in our early childhood classrooms. And I think because there's such a focus there. We're still struggling to think about, how do you teach those foundational skills to a student who's in high school? Who's a young adult without, you know, uh, without hurting their self esteem, quite frankly. Um, so we, we see that at the early childhood level. What we know, I know there was a question you had, Mr. O'Neill, about, um, the curriculum and where we're seeing the most success, which with which curriculums. It's not really about which curriculum. It's about the fidelity of implementation. So you look at schools like, uh, the, the Dearborn was here and presented to you. High fidelity and their scores, the Holmes, um, uh, oh my goodness, uh, the Kennedy, uh, in JP, in JP is another one. It's really about the fidelity and it's about really honing in on the instructional practice and making sure that we're implementing the curriculum properly. Um, and, and the real truth of it is we're, we're still far off. It's, it's really difficult to do. Um, I hope Carla doesn't mind me saying, um, even when we, we don't really like to use MAP scores as a summative assessment because it's a screener. And then when we put that kind of pressure on it, ew, it's just not, we don't want teachers to feel that way about screen. We want them to use a screener for instructional improvement. Um, but one of the things, for instance, is even at Carla's school, I was looking at her MAP data from last year and scores off the charts. This year, still good, um, but there's more room for improvement, but there's also been some transitions with teachers. And so there are these discrete things that happen in the life of a school that then impact, uh, what we see in terms of student achievement. So it's all these things combined, um, and I'd be happy to come back and talk about equitable literacy just from the focus of achievement. And let's just look at where students are.
And it, I think it would be interesting for us, even, and I think that that's real, right? Like I was a former principal, like I get it, a classroom changes and things change. But then like, are we seeing greater outcomes? I don't know. I'm making assumptions and teachers who have been using an instructional material for three plus years, what's the growth differential there? Like there's some of that where this as, as the folks who are responsible for the budget, right? Like some of that has to inform how we're thinking about resources. And that has to be like, is, is it worth the spend, right? Like, is it worth the spend at this pace? And we're making hard budget decisions, so that would be helpful. And if there's anything you want to share that you think is important in between, that would be good. Second question and then, oh, you were going to say something.
Oh, just briefly, I, um, I just wanted to piggyback on what Chief, uh, Miller stated, the science of implementation of data and effectiveness data. Um, what we saw or what you saw tonight was implementation data. And as Leslie mentioned, um, as you get better with implementation, implementation creates a cohesive effort of focus that, uh, um, actually creates opportunities for effectiveness to happen. I also want to mention too, because you talked about the gap in literacy, right? And it's one of the things that our office helps to oversee and to understand in the district is where our opportunity gaps are in the district. We had a huge gap in implementation of high quality instructional materials and we had to close that. And that is what Leslie had been presenting tonight. We also have a gap in performance. And in Boston, we've been stagnant for twenty years in literacy. In NAEP, you're, you're definitely correct. So one of the things that we presented at the opportunity and achievement gap task force is this opportunity to have literacy goals by region. To focus on literacy goals that all departments and all schools can work towards to close that gap. That is definitely a focus for us next year, something the superintendent has sanctioned for us to look forward. I'll be working with Leslie, uh, throughout the rest of this year and next year to, uh, for that implementation. But that's a really good question. We really need to focus in on the performance gap.
Appreciate that. And I, I'm excited to hear what those goals are too, as you, as you finish building them. The last question for me, I guess, as we think about the achievement gaps and I, you know, we talk about tier one, tier two, tier three, but again, when you have seventy percent of the system needing intervention because they are, we're talking about the, and then going back to like complex programming. We're talking about some schools are programming more, most of their students for tier two and tier three, right? And like, that's a, no longer really is a tier two, tier three, right? Cause that becomes your tier one.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, but so like you have all of that happening and so I'm like making space for, for all of that. And then we have policies in place. I'm a person on, uh, who loves talking about literacy like in a home of folks who are sub liberate, sub literate. But then I'm like watching what's happening in Mississippi where Mississippi, those results are fascinating. And, but they also have the literacy based promotion act, right? So like they've made some difficult decisions around promotion and literacy. I'm, am curious and this may be hard because the superintendent's here, but like, does, and maybe actually Dr. Chedge. Like, is that ever part of also how we're thinking about equity? Cause I am with you, the, the, the driver for equity for me is rigor. If you want to really change outcomes, you, you, you bring it with rigor. So I am just sort of curious, like how do we, how is multiple things true? Like we're bringing high quality instructional materials. We're focused on implementation. We want to see results, yet we keep promoting young people who are sub literate. And we then are asking, we are then creating such challenges for our high school educators to be like, go forth. Seventy percent of the students are off grade level. Like I'm just sort of curious on a policy level, like where does that live in our current thinking? When we're seeing other states implement, you know? And we may not have an answer, but it is something I'm deeply focused on.
I think part of it is, um, sorry. This, the, the work on HQIM, it's part of the reason why those young people go into secondary grades is because they were not given the kind of instruction and materials they needed to have. And when we talk about literacy, it is largely in the foundational evidence based literacy practices. And they were not given that opportunity. They were given opportunities to select what they read, which is great. However, when students couldn't meet grade level expectations, a lot was, the thinking was done for them. The levels were lowered for them. So they were not able to reach that bar and that's what we're trying to stick to now. I think your question about, um, I think retention and promotion and those kinds of issues. We will need to take a harder look at those things for sure. Um, but I think that we do a disservice to young people if we don't make sure we fix these things as well, before we then make a policy decision and say, oh, well, you know, sorry, you didn't get what you needed and now we're going to drop this policy. And so I do think your point is well taken. It needs to be something that is on our horizon, not so far away. But we also owe the system, our students, this opportunity here.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I just say one policy place that I think about off the top of my head is the work that was done around equitable grading, right? So like part of this is also ensuring that our educators. So like, part of this is also ensuring that our educators are clear? On what are the guidelines and the parameters? And the guardrails for ensuring that we're doing equitable grading policies? Even at the early learner stage? So that we're really actually holding that bar? And then figuring out what are the, the access points for kids? When you think about the data, I also, when I think about just early literacy data? I think about, in my community, we have grown exponentially around phonics data, right? But we are, we are, we're still on a three-year challenge around phonemic awareness? And, and phonological awareness? And so like, no matter which data point we look at? It's, it's drilling into that specific space? And then what is, what is the tier-two and tier-three strategies now? That you have to implement to address that now historic data point?
I can just briefly speak about Mississippi. I had an opportunity to work with Jackson Public Schools on their community engagement and strategic plan. And I believe the reason why they are accelerating in their literacy growth? Is because of cohesive focus.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Around literacy, which is why we recommended literacy goals? That all of our departments and schools will be focused on to create strategy to close gaps. It is happening. We have high-quality instructional materials. Teachers are aligned to effective strategy. And what Eric Green did in Jackson Public Schools is create that focus? Where everyone was learning one or two or three things, not 15.
Yes.
Right? But those things that are high leverage in creating improvement. That is why Mississippi is soaring.
Soaring. I'm, I'm with you, and I'm out of time. But with that, it is the fidelity. And there is something about not moving a kid from the reading-to-learn? Or learning-to-read phase into that reading-to-learn phase before they are ready? Because it becomes humiliating.
It's mastery.
Yes, it becomes humiliating to try to keep up. And we are watching the impact of that with 70% of our kids.
That's right.
Not reading on grade level? Because we push them into having to read for content.
And it's without, without the skill.
Yep. Thank you for that, you guys are great.
Thank you.
Chair, we have 10 minutes left.
We have 10 minutes left, okay? It's Tony.
Thank you for this presentation. Quickly hearing how you're doing it at one school was really helpful, so thank you for that. And most of my questions, you acknowledged and built in. That's the beauty of giving them to you ahead of time. So when we have a chance to review the material, so we had time to review the material? And we got a chance to put questions, and thank you for doing that. I just have one question, and it is about, I appreciate fully, you know, we have a range of curriculum? That our school leaders can choose from, that we have determined each are high-quality materials? And when you go out and you talk to schools, you have one school leader say, "Well, I, I like focus, you know, for these grades." Or like, it's like, Fish Tank or Fish Bowl? I always, I always want to say Fish Bowl, Fish Tank, right? And, and you hear the difference, why they like it? And, and I know it's about the professional development and the implementation with fidelity. I totally get that. But we are a student outcome-focused governance board, right? And we talked a little bit about outcomes. At what point is it a push-pull decision? Versus a school leader saying, "I want to change, I, I changed in English. Now this year, I'm going to change math." Versus the district saying, "We've looked at your results, it's time for a change." Like, you're going to change curriculum? Or we're going to change school leaders? Do you see, you see what I mean? And maybe that's a bit dramatic, but how is it push-pull? Help me out with that decision-making process on when to change curriculum? Per subject or whatever? And, and the support provided in the development side?
Sure. So for instance, when we think about transformation schools? Those schools have to use the district-supported curriculum. So for instance, Fish Tank is high-quality instructional materials, but it's not district-supported. So that means the school has to figure out their own means for professional learning. Now, with this 12-hour course, we did include Fish Tank? Because all of Region One basically uses Fish Tank? But we also, Region One had to do a racial equity planning tool to use Fish Tank.
That's right.
And so they had to describe to us, how will they handle their professional learning? You know, what are the things, you know, how have they looked at, you know, marginalized populations? In relation to their, that curriculum? Those schools were in a place where we felt like they could take that on. There are some schools, they, they may not be in that place. And not to single out, but the transformation schools are schools where? We know the district can support that curriculum. We want to make sure they have access to district resources, and so that's what they're using. I think to your question, Mr. O'Neill? Really, that's the whole push for HQIM. People can't use whatever they want anymore. And I understand there was rationale for that. They've used it, they liked it, the kids liked it. But the kids aren't achieving. And so they can't use it anymore. And so really, it's the, the approach we're taking with the entire district at this point? Where everyone has to use HQIM.
And just 40% of our schools have some degree of autonomy?
I'm sorry?
40% of our schools have some degree of autonomy? Pilot schools and district charter schools?
That's right.
You name it. How do we, how do we bridge that gap?
So I'll give the example of, let's say, New Mission. So New Mission has some autonomies? But they are a study sync school? So that is our ELA district-supported curriculum? And I've had conversations with Will about, there are some adaptations that they want to make at New Mission? And we feel comfortable with them making those adaptations? Because the students are performing incredibly well there. So we really look at, you know, the autonomy? And then how the students are doing? But the one thing that schools, whether you're autonomous or not? You don't have a choice about, you have to use HQIM, you have to.
So when we talk about literacy goals, and I love the idea of setting literacy goals? Have we set boundaries or thresholds? That if your students are achieving at this level, you have that autonomy? If they're not, you don't?
That's a great question. We have not done that. We've really been doing it on a case-by-case basis. But that is something we should do? So that schools are aware of what, you know, where they have some flexibility and where they don't?
What are the guardrails, so to speak? I think Dr. Tenon is going to say something.
One thing about that?
Yep.
I think it's very important to look at specifically disaggregated data? Not just overall, if a school has, has quote-unquote, like, high proficiency? We have to look at the level of every student making those achievement levels.
Understood, thank you. Great, thank you very much, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks. I know the hour is late and time is running short? So I wanted to say, thank you so much for this presentation? And thank you particularly for the concrete examples? Because as many of you know, that's what I've been, been asking for. But it was wonderful to hear the examples of how students are able to bring together their diverse knowledge? For better both legal understanding, but also to access the curriculum? I, I would like to hear more concrete examples of how this is happening at the various grade levels? So I will submit the rest of my questions to you? Because I think one of my biggest takeaways from this, and I know we haven't fully discussed it? Is that it's the impact on the adults. Our kids end up being penalized by what they don't get. But they don't get it because our adults haven't been able to give it to them. And so I think for so many years, we've worried about kids who can't perform at grade level. My, one question is, how do we define grade level? And do we can define it consistently across our district? In terms of what the expectations are? Is an A equal an A everywhere? Does reading a grade level in school X equal at a school Y? Given our kids are very mobile? So, you know, so it's the, it's the mindset? It's all, it's not just the instruction and the training? But it's the mindset and the commitment? And so my, my questions really are, how are we dealing with those things? As they impact equitable literacy, literacy and education at all within our district?
Thank you.
So again, I just want to say, thank you all for this presentation? And we look forward to more conversations in the near future.
Thank you all so much.
Ms. Parvath's public comments?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for staying up late. Thank you.
We have 16 people for public comment?
Yes. Let's go.
So, just a second. Please make sure you're signing to Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment? And be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your virtual hand when I call your name. The first speakers are going to be Cheryl Buckman, Minya Colpepper, Joseph Fister, Linda Parker, and Kim Emery. Cheryl Buckman.
Good evening, my name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a parent to a fifth grader at the Dever in Dorchester. I'm also a member of BEMCOSA and a longtime resident of South Boston. I'm here because I'm deeply invested in the well-being? And the right for our students to have high-quality education? The Dever lost 15% of its Latina teachers in a state-of-the-art dual-language program in 2014? Due to the school going into receivership? Now with the budget cuts, the Dever is expected to lose 10% more of its educators in an SCI program? Do the parents of the Dever even have a say at what happens? To their school community? BPS, you should be investing in our children's future? By adding more educators' programs? Like the inclusion program done correctly? Mental health, fully-staffed libraries? And better pay for all our teachers? Our children are our tomorrow's leaders and beyond? Without the proper materials, teachers, or even places to learn? How do these children spread their wings in learning? Cutting the budget and closing buildings is a major insult to our educators? Who have been the backbone for our children and community during and after this historic pandemic? This is what we do by repaying our educators by letting them go? This is what we tell our children that these programs or schools they have now, they won't next year? Hasn't a school like the Dever suffered enough? I come to you tonight as a parent to please reconsider the choices you are making? Because the wrong one will impact our children for many years to come? I leave with the quote, "Education is the most powerful weapon a child can have in this world." And to teach them that weapon is an educator? Without these two fundamentals?
Next speaker is Minya Colpepper. Please accept the prompt.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, you can start.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair? And the school committee members? I'm not sure if this school superintendent is still there. My name is Reverend Minya Colpepper. And I never would have thought that I would sit for four hours? Waiting to talk in support of anyone other than Albie Howland? There aren't many people that I would have sat for four hours? To talk in support of the Burke becoming the Albie Howland School of Technology? I've known Albie Howland for much of my life as a young man? At the Boys Club of Boston? I graduated from Boston Public High School? But I did not go to the Burke, I went to the English. Albie was part of a group of young men who mentored us at the Roxbury Boys? At, at, at the time, just the Roxbury Boys Club? And we grew to know Albie in a way that, Albie became our big brother? And we listened to Albie? Albie, and I agree with Dr. Johnson when she said that? Albie found ways to calm the waters, always. And so when I think of Albie, and I think about the history of Albie? It's not just limited to Burke. I think about Albie during busing? And I think about Louise Day Hicks during busing? And that school committee in those days? And how Albie was able to help us navigate through the racism and discrimination that we were facing? There was a time when I first went to Merrimack College? Didn't stay there a semester, came home for Thanksgiving? Had my tires flattened, they put.
Your timing's up?
Let me just say this. I thank the school committee for taking up the name of Albie? The Burke Becoming, the Albie Howland School for Technology? Believe that the school committee is listening? And with this, I really believe it shows that Boston is making progress.
Your testimony, your testimony, thank you very much. Next speakers, Joseph Fister and Linda Parker, not in the meeting, Kim Emery? Kim Emery, please accept the prompt.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Tonight, I, oh, I'm Kim, I'm from Boston? And I am a parent of a BPS student? I write with concern tonight? As I have found that BPS seems mired in toxicity and dysfunction? And I'm asking, when is enough enough? Despicable attempts to destroy professional and personal reputations are becoming more and more common here? It seems too often that some in the district are far too comfortable with complicity? And I'm wondering, where is the district's moral compass? Too often, those with power callously fabricate false narratives? To retain their control, to suit themselves? Or to retain their own professional power? Defamation, slander, libel? Are used without regard for truth and facts and the harmful consequences? These unscrupulous tactics are used as retaliation? For attempts to make improvement for Boston students? Well-intentioned educators and parents? Who are simply trying to hold the system accountable and make things better? Are being harmed when people in positions of responsibility? To impact positive change sit idly by? Complete disdain and delayed leadership? Allows students who identify that they don't feel safe in a classroom, for example?
But you said them.
And receive compounding harm? Equity concerns relating to students with disabilities raised repeatedly and repeatedly ignored? Why? How can that happen? This inaction and failure to mitigate harm? Seems to be sanctioned by district staff? If you want to help address this dysfunction and toxicity? Email dobetterbps@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is, next group of speakers are Danielle Noemi Voinoma, Meredith Pendleton, Greg Loftus, and Levon Martinez. We will need our Spanish interpreter for our next speaker, Danielle Noemi Voinoma.
Voina, que la palabra?
Please, Mr. Noemi, accept the prompt.
Buenas tardes. Muchas gracias por esta posibilidad y por esperar cuatro horas. Mi nombre es Daniel. Soy migrante y padre de una niña de primero y un niño de segundo en el JP Manning de Jamaica Plain.
Father of the first grade girl and a boy of the two grade girls in Jamaica Plain. My name is Daniel Noemi Voinoma. I live in Jamaica Plain.
Me dirijo a ustedes para pedir su atención respecto a dos asuntos concernientes a esta escuela. Uno, cambio de modelo.
I'd like to take your attention in two different aspects. One has to do with the change in the model. The teaching model is.
Y dos, relación.
Excuse me. One, we can't really hear you. The microphone sounds, we can't hear, it's cutting off. One, Mr. Bernard?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
No, we can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
No.
Then Randall would have to intervene, because if you can, is Randall available? Can you guys hear me?
Let's try.
Hello?
Yes, let's try.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Adelante, señor. Disculpe la interrupción. Adelante. Puede comenzar si puede.
Eh, está el comienzo? De nuevo?
No, no, sigan.
Ya, eh, dos relaciones. Relaciones con la comunidad por parte de la administración. Esto es la directora, Ms. Hart, y la supervisora, Dr. Luna.
It is regarding Dr. Luna as well and the supervisor, Dr. Hart. It has to do with the relation of the community with the community as well regarding community engagement. That is the second aspect I would like to bring to the attention.
El Manning ha sido un ejemplo de escuela de total inclusión de acuerdo a el estado de Massachusetts. Uno de los uno de los cuatro schools of recognition el año pasado.
It was one of the few schools that the recognition does the top of the few schools in Massachusetts of total inclusion. That is the Manning School I'm referring to.
Nuestro modelo de inclusión ha sido un co-teaching para los grados dos a seis con dos profesores y un para, que el próximo año va a ser cambiado a un profesor, un padre, y un especialista part-time. Simplemente el nuevo modelo es menos profesores por estudiante.
So the problematic that the new has is having less teachers per student. It has been taken different changes. What it has to do with the grade second to sixth, having different amount of teachers and the members per student. Basically, the teacher has less teachers per student.
Hemos pedido pruebas de que este modelo sea mejor. Es decir, muchas veces hemos pedido, hemos preguntado por eso y las respuestas nunca han sido dadas. Cuando se pidió data y después de mucho tiempo esta fue entregada, la misma data no corroboraba lo dicho por la administración.
We've been looking for different ways of improvement. We did request data as well, coordinating data. When the data was returned to us, it did not corroborate what the administration was saying.
Todo esto ha creado un ambiente hostil, difícil en la escuela, con la administración, y entre los apoderados también.
So this situation had created a very hostile environment regarding the persons that aided in the leadership decisions as well.
Por ejemplo, en una reunión el nueve de abril, se sugirió que los apoderados que estaban cuestionando el cambio de modelo, es decir, que estábamos haciendo preguntas, solo les preocupaba a sus propios hijos y que eran los privilegiados y entitled, que no tomaban en cuenta la realidad de todos los estudiantes.
No, and then a meeting that took place on April the ninth, there were many questions and they were questioning those persons that they were questioning the model itself, implying that the only concern and the only interest of those parents were their kids themselves.
Soy el padre de dos niños latinos e indígenas, uno de los cuales tiene un rendimiento bajo lo esperado. Para mí, que se insinúe que no me importa la educación de todos los niños y niñas en la escuela es insultante.
It is very insulting the fact that I am not concerned about the education of the all the boys and girls and every student in the district itself. I am the parent of two kids, two indigenous kids, one performing at a level and one performing at a lower level. So it is very insulting suggesting that I do not care about the general population.
Me temo que este tipo de comportamiento es una estrategia para callar a quienes no están de acuerdo con el cambio de modelo.
No, I do assume that this is particularly probably a strategy against those that do not agree with changing the teaching model, that is.
Thank you very much. My time is up. Thank you.
Parece que se le acabó su tiempo, señor Voinoma. Disculpe.
Next speaker is Meredith Pendleton.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Meredith Pendleton. I am a Manning Elementary School parent, and I am here to voice my concern about two things that are detrimental to the students at our school. The teaching model change that is to take effect this fall and the toxic and divisive environment that the administration has created and fostered throughout her tenure. First, the new teaching model to be implemented without parent, caregiver, and staff support, and without credible data to support its approved model, will result in less classroom resources and adult supervision, and therefore will not serve all children and their learning needs. Our learners need more resources, not less. Second is the behavior of the principal and its direct adverse impact on our teachers, which thus compromises our students' learning. Wielding fear and threats as tools of manipulation and control are illustrative of a weak and incompetent leader. Our teachers, I would argue, are some of the best in the city, and they're dealing with a magnitude of challenges. They are on the front lines every single day. And if we are not supporting our teachers and ensuring that they are healthy and happy, if we are not demanding that they have the resources that they need, and not ensuring that they have the emotional support that they need, that they feel safe and their voices are heard, we are not doing our job and we are not setting up our learners to succeed. This emotionally abusive behavior and abuse of power by leadership is simply unacceptable. Further, her communication with caregivers, specifically the language she has used in one-on-one parent meetings, has been insulting and antagonistic, and I speak from personal experience. Her divisive tactics and SSC meetings have created a toxic environment undermining caregivers and rendering them voiceless, which is contradictory to collaboration. As a parent and taxpayer, not only am I invested in my own child, I am also invested financially in the success of all the learners at the Manning School. I am a voter and I'm paying attention, and I will do everything in my power to make sure that the Manning is protected no matter what the cost. School committee members and Superintendent Skipper, I urge you to look into these matters immediately and do what you say is your mission to support our learners, and that starts with supporting our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Greg Loftus.
Thank you. My name is Greg Loftus. I'm a parent of two children at the JP Manning Elementary School. Our family lives in Rosendale, and I've been engaged in the school parent council at the Manning for the last seven years. I'm here today out of concern for the future of our elementary school. I believe we are in the midst of a complete failure of leadership at our school. Specifically, our principal is engaging careless and destructive behaviors that have completely undone our school community and created a toxic environment for teachers, staff, and caregivers. Over the course of this year, the principal has turned the entire school upside down. Drastic changes in staffing have led to the loss of many of our most valued educators and staff. Longtime staff members have been dismissed for seemingly superficial reasons, and our entire teaching model has been rehauled across every grade with little to no justification for the incredible breadth and depth of these changes. I understand that every school is a fluid environment where change is a constant. This means that change management must be an essential skill for a school principal. But our principal has been vindictive and cruel in her change management. There is no empathy or understanding of the loss being experienced by the school at the dismissal of many beloved teachers, and our principal has demonstrated a willingness to speak poorly of the staff in front of caregivers and has even denigrated certain parents in front of other parents. Effects have been divisive, fracturing the caregiver community, and sowing mistrust and confusion. And the reasons for these drastic changes remain unclear. The Manning is not a school in need of drastic changes. It has been a model of a high-performing school for many years. The principal has no clear answer to the question of why she is making these damaging and irreversible changes to our school. We are already mourning the loss of what we had, and our community is scared about what the future will hold. Our principal is dismantling our school right in front of our eyes, and I do not believe she has a coherent plan for putting things back together. I'm especially troubled by the stories that I'm hearing from my fellow school community members about the verbal and emotional abuse that our principal relies upon to inflict her particular brand of toxic leadership. And the caregiver community is greatly concerned about a pattern of behavior that is emerging around our principal's leadership, based on experiences that have been shared with us by former coworkers of our principal at a previous school. This pattern of failed leadership cannot be ignored. Our community understands that being a public education administrator is difficult. Out of respect for the innate challenges, we would have attempted for months to engage with the principal directly, but we have been routinely dismissed by the principal and the superintendent.
Your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Hector Negron. Mr. Negron, can you please accept the prompt? Otherwise, we will continue with Hani Murad, and we can come back to you. Hani Murad.
Good evening. My name is Hani Murad. I'm a school psychologist in Boston Public Schools. I'm here this evening. Thank you for having me first. It's been a long day, and I were going to be short. I'm here this evening to talk on behalf of the school psychologists. We are losing seven positions in our department, and I think it has been a sad day for many of us, as some of our colleagues are prepared to leave our department. And as we know, the needs of our students have increased, not only from the COVID and aftermath of COVID, but because of the challenges that they face on a daily basis. And instead of increasing the resources to help students and their families cope and manage social, emotional issues, we are letting go of seven positions in our department. I want to appeal to the school committee and the superintendent and implore you to find a way not to let those seven great school psychologists lose their jobs, not only for them, but also for our students who needs them on a daily basis. I thank you, and I hope you can consider our request. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Hector Negron. Please unmute yourself.
Yes. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Good evening, City Council. I appreciate the time and just like Reverend Menard, I would not stay up four hours for anybody but Dr. Holland. I'm a product not only of the Burke but of Dr. Holland. I graduated from the Burke in nineteen ninety-two. I've worked in Boston Public Schools as a dean of students for the last fourteen years and always seeking his guidance. They made it look easy. Him and his team made it look easy at the Burke. But now, you know, for the past fourteen years, I've seen how tough it's been, you know, and it's not an easy job. And he made it look so easy. But again, like everybody said, it wasn't just at the Burke. He was basically known through the whole city, through the whole state. And, you know, it was one of them things, again, he supposedly retired, but he's not retired. You know, he just can't, he doesn't know how to not give of himself. And again, the full circle for me is, like I said, I graduated from the Burke in ninety-two, and I'm finishing off my BPS career at South Boston, which is currently Excel High School, which is where he started off. And again, the work is not easy, but I appreciate and understand everything that he did for me and the team that he put together, and I think that's one of his strongest attributes is knowing how to put strong teams together and put them in the right places in the school. So thank you again for your time, and I really hope that the consideration is not just a consideration, and it does happen to be named the Albert D. Holland Technical School. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is speaking on reports, Kim Emery.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. So again, I'm Kim. I'm a Boston resident and a BPS mom. I appreciated very much learning tonight about the impact of equitable literacy on historically marginalized students. I also appreciated the presenters lifting up concerns that outcomes for students with disabilities were flat. That knowledge can facilitate mitigation efforts. Since my outreach to district leaders in the spring of two thousand twenty-three, I've remained. Sorry. I remain. I've remained interested in mitigation efforts to address equity and opportunity gaps related to students with disabilities, not just special education, but outcomes relating to five oh fours as well. I encourage the district to enhance family voice and engagement in spaces like Equity Round Tables, capturing street data in these essential spaces. I participated in our school's Equity PLC in the spring of two thousand twenty-one. We looked at disaggregated data for students with five oh four plans and IEPs for DNF lists. Our students with disabilities were showing up disproportionately. That allowed the school to address mitigation efforts. And I've attended every school-based Equity Round Table here at my child's school this year, and yet I'm not aware of any discussions or data related to the problem of practice addressing inequities for students with disabilities. Linking equity concerns for students of disabilities from families here, unaddressed since May of two thousand twenty-two, have been repeatedly brought to the Equity Round Table since September of this year but ignored. Five oh four data related to DNF lists and chronic absenteeism were ignored for our quality school plan as well. I share this concern so that the district personnel will be curious and look into where the disconnect is between schools' practices and the gaps.
Your time is up.
For all marginalized students.
Send me your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Chair, that was our last public comment.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you again to all of those who testified this evening. Your comments are very important to us. New business? All right. Thank you. Well, that concludes our business for this evening. Please remember that the next hybrid school committee meeting will take place in person on Monday, June seventeenth at six P M. at the Balding Building. Like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion, objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all and have a good one.